I'm here to adjourn the planning commission meeting of September 19th. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the liberty of the body for which it stands, one nation, united, individual, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Commissioner Brown?
Here.
Commissioner Kaczynski?
Here.
Commissioner Tally?
Here.
Commissioner Wu?
Here.
Chair Pro Tem Blackwell?
Here.
Vice Chair Rulon?
Here.
And Chair Crandall?
Here. Next item is special orders of business, and we have none. We have two sets of minutes to review. One of the minutes of the regular meeting of the study session of the planning commission of September 5th, 2018. Do we have any revisions or a motion?
This is for the study session. I don't have any comments.
Go ahead.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of the study session of the City of San Clemente Planning Commission from September 5th, 2018.
I second. We have a second by Commissioner Wu. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Passes seven zero. Now we have the minutes of the regular meeting of the planning commission of September 5th. Do we have any revisions or a motion?
I do. I think on page three, it was a move by Commissioner Tally, seconded by Commissioner Blackwell. Not me.
Okay. With that revision, do we have a motion or more changes?
Yes, same page. Item 8A, third paragraph, top paragraph, it reads whether it would be appropriate to require screening of the rooftop equipment as part of the discretionary sign permit because plans for screening the equipment would require the applicant to obtain approval of an architectural permit and separate building permit. As I recall, the discussion went, it was more about the potential for a building permit. There was really no discussion about any other permit but the building, and that was our concern, that we'd send the applicant through an undue.
I think it was planning and building permit.
Yeah, it would also require, if we were to approve it, a architectural...
Yes, it would have required an architectural permit.
...as well as a building permit.
Is that your recollection? That was actually in the discussion?
That's the way I understood it. Whether it was in the discussion or not, I couldn't vote for that.
My recollection is that it was your comment.
Okay.
And that's why...
Yeah, that's my recollection.
That comment is a sort of a...
Run on, Sid.
I believe it was may require...
I think the comment is like sort of a summation of people that spoke to that item, that comment.
Okay. I'm certain it was may require, not that it would, because we don't know. We hadn't had anything to review.
And I would be comfortable with that, may. That's fine.
I recall may.
Yeah. Okay, well, with that minor correction, I have no other comments.
Okay, do we have a motion with those changes? I so move.
Second.
We have a second by Rulon. All in favor? Aye. Aye. Passes... All opposed? Passes seven zero. The next item is oral and written communications. Members of the audience may address the commission on matters of public interest which pertain to the city and are not otherwise on the agenda. If you wish to speak, please step forward to the microphone, state your name and city of residence, and make your presentation. Please limit your presentation to three minutes. Do we have any cards, Eileen?
No, sir.
So we have, and I see nobody with their hands up, so we will move to the next item. Consent calendar. There are no items, so we can go to item eight, public hearings. Time limitation for applicants is 10 minutes. All other speakers would be three minutes. The first item is item A, 218 Avenida Del Mar, conditional use permit 18353, cultural heritage permit 18354, Brussels Bistro. And Amy Stonish is our planner.
Well, good evening, Chair, and members in the commission. Tonight, I'm going to provide a brief presentation on the proposal for Brussels Bistro. The application includes three general parts. First, a minor cultural heritage permit for facade changes. Second, a conditional use permit for the sale of a full line of alcoholic beverages. And third, a minor conditional use permit for an amendment to M CUP 06285 to modify the current hours of operation. So this project site is located in a mixed-use zone and is within the architectural central business and coastal zone overlays of the downtown T-zone area. The restaurant is located at 218 Avenida Del Mar with the parking located at the rear of the building off of Avenida Cabrillo. There is an easement for access and parking on the adjacent parcel at 220 Avenida Del Mar. The facade improvements include removal of the existing awnings and installation of smaller canvas awnings, the new accordion-style patio doors at the patio, and a new entry door, painting the existing railing, replacement of signage, which would be under a separate permit, installation of new exterior lights, and painting the exposed patio ceiling. Here you can see the original proposal. This project was reviewed by the Design Review Subcommittee where they received direction, where the applicant received direction to revise the modern-style facade, which is shown here, with a more Spanish colonial style. You can see in the original version, it was very modern with a fixed awning and painted brick. Based on the input, the applicant made revisions to be more in keeping with the Spanish colonial revival style, including the canvas awnings with the swoop, the gooseneck fixtures, wood patio doors with rectangular glass, and an exposed brick finish. The zoning code requires that a conditional use permit be obtained in order to serve a full line of alcohol. The prior approval was for beer and wine only, so this application includes a CUP for full alcohol sales. The original minor conditional use permit also required an amendment to condition number 14 in order to modify the hours of operation. Therefore, this application includes an amendment to the minor CUP to extend hours. The proposed hours are Sunday through Thursday, 10:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m., and Friday and Saturday from 10:00 a.m. until midnight. These hours are consistent with other nearby restaurants, including HH Cotton's, Nyx, South of Nyx, and others on Del Mar. The existing hours for the restaurant that was there was 11:00 a.m. until 10:00 p.m., and that was seven days a week. The applicant has provided a revised site plan to accommodate 10 spaces on Lot 7 and one ADA accessible space on Lot 32. These 11 spaces will be provided in addition to the three that are located on Lot 33. The revised plan is before you on the dais. You can see here the parking spaces individually. The original approval for the prior restaurant at this location included the requirement for the recordation of an easement agreement. The agreement maintained access from the parking lot at Lot 7 through the neighboring property at Lot 33 in order to access the front of the restaurant on Lot 32. The agreement also includes parking. As mentioned in the previous slide, based on the number of seats for indoor and outdoor seating, a total of 11 spaces are required. With the inclusion of the three spaces on Lot 33, there are a total of 14 So staff reviewed the application for Brussels Bistro, and based on the facade improvements and their consistency with the SCR style, with consistency and compatibility with neighboring restaurants, and the conformance to the zoning code and general plan, staff is recommending approval of the project. The recommendation is before you. There is also an errata sheet for a duplicate condition that was on the resolution. That was, condition number seven has been removed and is shown on that errata sheet. If you have any questions, I'd be able to answer them. The applicant and their representatives are also here to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, for questions, Commissioner Blackwell?
I'm going. Commissioner Tally?
I'm sorry.
Oh, okay.
Commissioner Tally.
So I was in the DRC, so it was nice to see that our input was well-received and that you carried that through, so thank you. I've got two questions about the actual conditions of approval here. The first one is, I think, condition, the new condition number nine, I think there's a typo there. It should be an engineering department encroachment permit shall be in place, instead of just shall in place. That's minor, but let's do that. And then my second question is the use of amplified sound, including the electronic amplified sound and music, human voice, or other sound. So does that prohibit, you know, the restaurant from playing just background music at a low volume inside there?
No.
Because that's technically amplified, right?
The reference here would be code enforcement amplified sound, like with a speaker. You're right, probably music over a speaker on, for general background music might meet that same.
That's my concern, because I don't think that's the intent, right?
The intent is for live music.
And if somebody's announcing, like, you know, tally party, you know, your table is ready, that's, I don't know if people do that anywhere, they just give a buzzer, right? But that would technically be the amplified, you know, human voice, right?
That's a very good point.
So can we tighten that up at all?
Or even a TV.
Yeah, inside, right?
Inside, so, yeah, if...
And I saw that TVs on one of the pictures up there, right? So I assume that they intend to have that. How, I hate to legislate from the dais here.
Oh, TVs, no. So the pictures, of course, were from before, so...
Okay, maybe there's...
And of course, it was a pizzeria before, so that was more conducive for the televisions.
But they could have a TV inside.
There's nothing that says they couldn't.
Except it can't ham amplify sound pursuant to this condition. So maybe you could take a stab at that while we're discussing.
Sure, something geared more towards live.
Or the attorney could craft it while we're...
Yeah, just something, I think we're concerned with like loud music.
That's correct.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Tally?
Blackwell.
Blackwell, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Do you want to go again?
No.
Sure.
He's got more.
Oh, you will. You'll be back.
Maybe.
Hi, April. Thank you for the great presentation.
Sure.
Oh, I'm sorry, Amy. Not April. I'm looking forward to spring. Can we revisit the parking again?
Sure.
I'm interested, most interested in the accessible spaces
Sure.
versus the applicant's proposal for seating. There was, in another slide, you showed that there were 55 seats. Now, was that, was that roughed out just to show the math and how we're coming up with the, just to show the formula for the required parking?
Yes.
Or is the applicant actually proposing only 55 seats?
So the seating stays the same as the prior restaurant. There were 55 seats, and it was conditioned as such. The requirement is that one space for each five seats is required. There are 16 seats on the outdoor patio. They are allowed to have up to 16 seats without that counting towards the parking requirement. So that equates to 11 spaces when we figure ones per five at 55 seats. They provide a total of 11 between the ADA accessible and then the now 10 spaces on Lot 7. In addition to that, there are three spaces that would be part of that easement agreement on the Lot 33, which is next door.
Okay, so is that reciprocal agreement?
Correct.
Okay. So the, the report indicates 55 seats, though the site plan shows 60 total with seven accessible.
I'm sorry, the site plan?
The applicant's site plan and their drawings, it shows 60 total seats and seven accessible. So it just, it's pretty clearly defined there, but there was nothing in writing that supported that. But I like to refer to the exhibits when we're approving a project like this. It is part of the review.
Oh, on the floor plan, maybe?
Yeah.
Hmm. So on sheet A2...
What is this, the new one?
Indoor seating, 55 persons.
Yeah, it's...
Okay.
Just want to make sure that we're clear on what we're, the applicant's clear in what they're asking for and what they're being granted. Want to make that part of the record, that they will be limited to just the 55, not the 60.
So they, with the additional spaces, they have extra spaces now with the addition of 10. So the new site plan that's before you, there are 10 on Lot 7 with the ADA on Lot 32. That equates to 11. That, that would be 55. However, there are three additional seats that, based on this agreement, they could technically use as well. So that allows them another...
So it's 58 total, not 60.
Right, five for each one of those. So they could go with more.
Okay, so it'd be sheet A2, yeah.
An additional 15 seats even.
Oh, up to 15 more?
Sure, you get five per one space.
And so there was, there was enough there. And we're not counting any accessible stalls from the rear, are we?
Accessible from the rear. There is one space that they're proposing to be accessible. It's not there currently, however, it will be required. They're aware of that and have been working through, they're actually in the building plan check process and so have been through that pretty far.
Okay. I just, being out on the side, I didn't notice one, and I also didn't know...
It's not there currently.
That's why there's no painting, there's no safe route. None of that's there, and the only access would be down that alley. So I just wanted to make sure we're going to be, you know, taking steps to ensure that safe route.
Sure. Technically, right now, there are 12 spaces. That counts the nine that are on Lot 7 currently. They are going to change that to 10. Then on Lot 33, there are three, which will be, remain to be three. There is no handicap accessible on Lot 32. That would be added.
Okay, and that's part of the agreement as well? That's being added to the agreement?
The agreement will not be modified.
If they...
It stands. I could, maybe, we could talk about that. More is that the question?
Would they, would they need to amend their agreement to add that stall?
No.
Okay. Because there is spatial requirements for those stalls. It could change things and impact all the other stalls. So sure the math will be done, and it's going to work out just fine. So don't need to cross that bridge, I guess, since we've got it handled, right?
Great question, though.
Okay, all right. And then final question is at the rear. I didn't see any discussion about any improvements at all at the rear.
That's another good question. And I've actually worked with the applicant. They will be painting the back to match the white of the front. The facade needs a fresh update. However, the brick will not be painted. So the rear would match the building next door to that. It's white. Right now, I would say it's not white.
Beige-ish.
Yeah. I have lots of pictures in here if you want to see them all, but bear with me. Okay.
Kind of had some of it, yeah.
Yeah, so that would, right now, it's a bit of a yellow color. It will be white to match. You can see the building next door is white. It will match that one.
Great. Well, that's good.
We had a landscape, please. Pardon? We had a landscape.
We did, we did. So that's all I have right now, Amy. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Kaczynski?
I'm looking at that picture you just had up.
Sorry.
The white SUV, Amy?
Yes.
The signs up there are, say, towing, it's limited to just the business that that building is part of. Are those coming down? It says no parking except for...
Except for that business?
Yeah.
So the agreement would override any availability of that. So whether they could enforce that or not, I might, I might defer that question to our attorney.
And the parking lot itself, I've noticed that it says no public parking. Are those signs, is there any kind of...
I noticed that as well. So it, it's technically their parking lot, and if people were to use it to go to the beach, they could enforce that.
Well, it says no public parking. It doesn't say parking for any specific restaurant.
I, I would agree. It probably should be reworded.
Is there anything, any condition that would...
There's not a condition that it be reworded.
I don't believe it's currently there, no.
Should we look at that? And the other thing is, I actually drove down that alley with my car, and it's, it's a one-way, right?
Correct.
You go into the parking lot from the street, and you go down that very narrow alley. Is there, has there been any discussions on making that any safer? Because there's a blind corner as you, just before you hit the street.
Right there?
Yeah.
That alley?
Yeah.
So that's where the agreement is for the easement for access, because it is a one-way? So this portion here with the restriping will meet the standards. It requires a minimum 18-foot-wide drive aisle. Then the parking spaces can be, I want to say it's 19.9 feet in width, or in length, and then 19, or excuse me, 9.8 feet in width at a 60-degree angle. So it will be restripped to meet our current code requirements. That's the parking spaces here. As far as the easement, that was part of the agreement and will remain. There are no changes to it, so I can't move the building. It won't change. Wouldn't make it more nonconforming.
Well, one of the concerns I had as I was driving out is I, my entire front of my car was in the sidewalk before I was able to see any pedestrians.
I can agree that it's an unusual circumstance. However, it was established legally and has been maintained in the same condition and would remain.
All right, thank you.
Okay, could we, in the meantime, craft a quick condition of approval to review the signage on the parking lot, and if so, when it's voted on, we can vote on, including that or not?
Point of order on that one real quick. There is a specific clause in here that signage is not included in this.
I think parking lot signage wouldn't be under...
Yeah, we could certainly add a condition of approval that requires the parking lot signage to be modified to be consistent with the, with the agreement.
Very good. Yeah, thank you. Commissioner Wu?
Hi, Amy.
Hi.
Yeah, I have a few minor questions. First, can you confirm that, because this is a mixed-use zone, so can you confirm there's no residents nearby next door?
There are residents nearby. In fact, they do, are adjacent to the property on the left-hand side there. You can see, that's at the back, the rear of the property.
Okay.
If you'd like, I can pull up the aerial as well.
So there is a condition to say if it's too loud and the city planner has the power to change the operation hours and et cetera.
There is. Not only would we be approving these conditions, but also the conditions would remain in full force and effect of the original amendment, or the original CUP that stands here. The reason for that is so that the, those original conditions stand as well as the easement agreement.
Okay, so there was some conditions on the original CUP, but we don't have a copy of that.
I have them, if you'd like.
Okay, that's fine. And also regarding the parking, and you stated that the extra three parking behind 220 Del Mar can be used by 218, and you said it's in the easement, in the easement agreement. I read it. It's tiny, but I read it using a microscope, no, magnifier. I didn't see anything. I think that is, my understanding of the easement is, it's an ingress egress easement for both party to use, other party to get in and out of the parking. So I don't see any language saying that 220 give, grant the easement to 218 the exclusive right to use these spaces. I just don't see that. Can you point out?
Yes. And, and thank you for that. And thank you for that. It's a great question, because the original agreement does read in the recital section that the parking would be on lot 7. However, it also references a map, which is shown here. It's difficult to read because it's been copied over the years. Remember that this was recorded in 2006. I think the recording date was actually 2007, but it was prepared in 2006.
Well, this is better version, because my copy has all blacked out.
Yeah, this one was slightly better. So, because the actual... The recital was a little bit confusing, but the condition does include both easement and parking, and the parking is shown on this. It's difficult to see, but this is a building for the restaurant. This is the neighboring where the agreement is with a different property owner. Here are the three parking spaces. And then, here are what are now nine spaces, but will be converted to 10 parking stalls. This is where the ADA space will go. The agreement would include both the easement for here, that unusual tight alleyway. It was a one-way and with the partial reason for the agreement.
Well, my question is, where in this agreement it says that 218 property can use that three parking spaces?
And that...
If you can point to the language to me.
Sure, sure. So, on... Well, I don't have the agreement up here, but under the conditions, the grant of mutual reciprocal easements, it depicts in the exhibit A, and it references specifically, this is exhibit A, that... And David, maybe have some more to input on this.
Yes, Commissioner. We were presented with this question, and we looked over the reciprocal parking agreement to make sure that it still conformed to the purpose of the original conditions of approval, given, you know, what we call that Scribner's error in the recitals. And what... I have the agreement here and what Amy's referring to is the first term of the agreement, which is the grant of mutual reciprocal parking easements. And it says that that grant of easement is depicted on exhibit A, which is the map that Amy has before you. So, even though there's the misstatement in the recitals, term one of the agreement and exhibit A very much provide the reciprocal parking agreement that was contemplated by the original conditions of approval.
So, you're comfortable, from a legal perspective, that they have what they say they have?
Yes.
Thank you.
Is that a shared parking agreement? So, where are the parking for 220 Del Mar?
Right here. These three spaces here.
So, if the three parking spaces are given to 218, 220 has no parking?
No, I wouldn't say that they're given to... The access to them is allowed under this. Suppose it would be reciprocal, both.
So, they're not... They're not exclusive? They're mutual?
Yes. So, it actually is titled reciprocal easement agreement, so...
Also, for the new exhibit showing 10 parking spaces on lot 7?
Right, so the 10 spaces are new. This originally was nine spaces, as it is right now.
Did you have a chance to have a civil engineer to look at the 10 parking space layout to make sure they meet the size requirement?
I do have the city standard, which the new 10 spaces has been revised to be consistent with. And I mentioned those measurements, so I won't kill you with measurements, but they are consistent with our 60-degree angle parking. So, these 10 spaces will be revised, and they are in conformance as shown in this plan and before you on the dais.
Have you verified they meet those requirements?
That will happen during plan check.
That will happen during plan check, yes.
Okay. Because it was nine, and suddenly you just draw everything narrower. You have 10. We're not sure if you have that. Okay, but it will...
It meets the city standard, yes.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions for staff? And then, do we have the applicant here to make a statement?
We do.
Hi, good evening. Thank you. First, my name is Nicolas Seve. I'm one of the two owners at Brussels Bistro. First of all, I want to thank Amy for her presentation and for her work during the entire process. So, as I said, I'm one of the two owners at Brussels Bistro, and with my partner, we are two young Belgian entrepreneurs with both 20-plus years of experience in the restaurant business. Since 14 years now, we do manage Brussels Bistro in Laguna Beach. And we have chosen to expand our business and open a second location, and we have chosen to do it in San Clemente. We are really excited to make part of the San Clemente's community. We are really excited to share our Belgian culture with San Clemente's resident, and we are also really super excited to share what to sell and to serve our famous Moulfrit to everyone downtown in San Clemente. We have a unique product. We, I think, will bring a new authentic, new dining experience to what's existing in downtown San Clemente at this time. We have worked closely with the city for about five months now to improve the design, and we have done everything what the planning staff did ask of us. We have worked to all of the conditions and the design elements recommended by staff and by the Design Review Subcommittee to obtain your approval. We are a small company, and we hope that you understand that we are really eager to open our business, as this has been a very expensive and time-consuming process for a small company like ours. As I said, we are really excited to arrive in San Clemente, and we are here tonight to, what, to ask for your help and approval so that we can move forward and get open for our new customers. Thank you.
Does anyone have any questions for the applicant? Commissioner Brown?
Yes. We have, like, a couple more conditions in work here. We have 13 conditions here and a couple... Do you understand all the conditions of approval?
Yes.
As I've explained to you, and you have no questions on them?
So far, no, I do understand them.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
Commissioner Tally? So, I just wanted to compliment you. I sat in at the last Design Review Subcommittee meeting, and those that were there, I think there was some discussion about whether we needed things to come back to Design Review Subcommittee or whether you would be able to take the comments that we had and incorporate those and provide those changes. And from my recollection, I think you've done that. So, thank you for being able to do that, so we didn't have to talk about some of those things here tonight. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Blackwell?
Yes. Hi. Thank you for bringing us another great concept and choice in fine dining. How long were you in Laguna Beach?
14 years.
Were you the original owner?
No, 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 no. I'm one... Well, my partner is here for 12 and a half years, and there were different ones since the beginning. But with my partner, we are... Well, we know each other since we are born. We grew up together, so we know each other really good. He did manage the restaurant for 12 years. I was in Belgium. Well, I did a lot of back and forth the last, what, six, seven years, just to see how it was working, and we were really excited to take over Brussels Bistro. It is like a childhood dream. And I did arrive with my family. I did move with my family a bit more than two years ago, and now it's time for us to expand. We are, well, he's more... He's the chef, so he's the cook. He's behind all of the operation behind Brussels Bistro for 12 years. And I did arrive, well, just to help him, and so together we can move forward and expand our business and develop our restaurant, Brussels Bistro.
Great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, I see no more questions. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
We will close the presentation portion of this item and open it up for public comment. We have three cards of people that would like to speak. First is Thomas Cronert. Second will be Paul White. Third will be Alex Haynes.
My name is Tom Cronert, and I'm a 33-year resident of Laguna Beach, but obviously a close neighbor of yours and have a lot of friends that live here. I... My wife and I visited Belgium in 2004 as part of a vacation, fell in love with the food and the way they do things, and saw how different they were. And low and behold, we returned home, and in about four or five months, we saw in the paper that Brussels Bistro was opening. So, we were there the second night they were open, and we have been going there ever since. It's our... It's basically the only restaurant we go to. We have no relationship with any of the guys. We are not part owners at all. We do usually get a pretty nice table when we get there, but other than that, they know what we want on the menu and so on. But my role, I hope, is just to make you comfortable that you're going to be bringing some very good food to your city, as well as the business and so on. A few months after we returned home and got into Brussels Bistro and started eating there, we found out that there was no other place like that. We had grown to like Belgian food and understand it. Couldn't find anywhere else in Orange County. So, that's one of the reasons why we've been going there so often. But when you start to look at the foods that they serve, the kind of food they make, it's different than most of us who've been brought up here in the United States have ever eaten in our own homes or in other restaurants. On top of that, for those of you who are interested, there are about 350 different beers brewed in Belgium, and that's an art in and of itself, because all of the beers that they serve are imported from Belgium. There's... You can't buy a Budweiser, I guess, if you... I don't think you could if you wanted to. And then, after you get all this food and good camaraderie, you have this wonderful staff of theirs. They have a knack, and they've had it from day one, of hiring really nice people to work there. I don't mean aggressive people. I just mean really nice waiters and waitresses, and you're always happy to go there because you know you're going to be cared for, given the attention that you deserve, and so on. And my wife and I were talking in preparation for this little appearance, and we agreed that we've never had a bad meal there in all the years we've gone there. We've never had to send somebody back... Something back to the kitchen. It's just... It's a great spot, so you're going to be lucky. We'll be sharing it with you down in Laguna, but I think you'll enjoy it, and I hope you find it a good choice for your city. Thank you.
Thank you, Thomas. Next is Paul White.
I'm Paul White, and my wife and I are the owners of Missy's, which is at 220 Avenue Del Mar, right next door. And I've come to know Nicholas now, since he's been here working on getting the restaurant going. And ever since Selma's restaurant has closed, we've noticed a significant reduction in the foot traffic in the area, resulting in a little bit slower business. And so, we're anxious to see this new restaurant become open, because we're looking forward to that evening traffic that comes to our store, and we like working with the other retailers in the area. We have a good relationship with Nix and some of the others, and we like to, you know, share what we have in our store with the others, and we like to work with the other retailers and the restaurants. And there's a camaraderie that we all kind of share with each other, and, you know, we give each other deals and stuff like that. And so, we would really love to see this new restaurant open. It sounds really exciting. We like to think that it's going to be a great addition to Del Mar. And, you know, I think Nicholas is a great guy, and what Tom just said, we're anxious. I'm ready for a new restaurant myself. So, we would hope that you guys will take a good look at their plans, and I hope that you will approve it very soon.
Very good. Thank you, Paul. Next is Alex Haynes.
My name's Alex Haynes. I just came from work. I own Dewey's Downtown and also have... Own the property with my father at 218 Del Mar. So, I heard some... There were some questions you had about easements, about some different things. So, first thing I wanted to do is just quickly make myself available to maybe clarify some things. But the second thing is, we were happy to have Selma's come on board, and it really gave Del Mar a new type of business. And along with that, we started seeing other places come up, and we're very excited about that. When Selma's chose to go, we were very particular about who we were looking for, and we wanted a business. My father owns the property there. I help him with that property. And we were very particular about who was coming in. Brussels was looking at Encinitas. They were looking at La Jolla. They were looking at Hounington Beach, and they felt that San Clemente was the perfect fit for them. And we checked them upside down and sideways, and we looked at their organization. I went in without them knowing it, before they knew me, and I was just so pleasantly surprised, the friendliness of the people, the excellence of the food. You cannot go wrong having this restaurant as part of Del Mar and the beautiful restaurants and things that are going on there. So, that being said, if you want to talk about some nuts and bolts, if you have a question or two, I can address maybe a couple things just off the cuff. I didn't come prepared, other than I just came from work just to come up here and offer moral support, but then I thought there were some questions you might have about... Like, you talked about the alleyway. We don't own that property. That's Dr. Baker that owns the property that's adjacent to the alleyway. And then, there's another property that's owned by Pete Wisnig, I think, right next door. I'm not sure there's any way to widen that, but it... We don't can... We don't own... We have an easement joined with the city, but we don't own any of that. And I do share your concern, maybe a, you know, some kind of mirror or something that would... You could see people coming up or something of that nature, but I agree with you. If you have any other questions to throw at me, I can try to answer them, but that's about it.
Very good. Thank you.
All right, very good. Thanks.
We have one more. Jean-Louis Denier?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and thank you for considering the applicant's opening of the restaurant, Brussels Bistro. I've been a resident of San Clemente. I've been in San Clemente for 39 years. I own... Currently own Nix Vacuums on Del Mar. We're next... Practically next door to Selma's. And I wanted to really plead with you and ask you to consider and accept this applicant's request to have this restaurant. We actually go to Laguna Beach to eat at their restaurant. Great food, great beer, and I really wanted to... Been here to greet and support, and wanted to ask you to just really, please do not... Please accept this application. It'd be a big mistake not to. It's going to be adding a different cultural enhancement to the city in the food. And I just, you know, in regards to the parking situation, I was kind of confused as to being a Selma's, having the same amount of seating and having, you know, being able to open, why wouldn't the same amount of seating not having all these, you know, conflicts in the parking? Why would that be a conflict? But nonetheless, my table at his restaurant is not going to require parking, because we live right down the street. We'd be walking to there. So, I just wanted to... I'm here in support to Nicholas, and I wish... Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you very much. Anyone else want to speak at this time? We will close the public comment. Eileen? And we will open it for discussion, and I have one or two. And this would be a question for staff. Is it limited to the 58 seats that we have in the original conditions of approval? Is that what's established, the 58 seats? And we're not revising that? So, if there is a code enforcement issue at any time, that's what is the count?
That's a very good question. As far as the number of seats, the condition that we'd be rescinding has simply the hours As far as the number of seats, the condition that we'd be rescinding has simply the hours of operation. Also, some reference to beverages served outdoors would be only in unbreakable containers. So that condition goes away. The limitation on the number of 55 seats, there wasn't a condition that prior to the issuance, the written agreement would be executed between Lot 732 and 33, assuring the availability of 12 parking spaces and access between the properties for the life of the restaurant's occupancy at the site. In reading that condition, it does not limit it to the number of seats, and because it limited to availability of 12 parking spaces, it does not prohibit it from having more than 12 parking spaces.
So we are increasing the intensity by the --
No.
Over the original conditional use?
No.
Because they only had 11, I guess, before parking spaces?
So they had -- let's see. Sometimes it's easier to look at the overview. So before, this little red area here was nine. That's what's currently out there, nine. Then, bear with me, here's the one that's not there right now. But these three, plus the three, so nine plus three was 12. That's where the 12 existed. That meets their minimum. They are now adding additional parking. So they could have more than 12 spaces to provide, but they just need to have a minimum of 12 between the three lots, which they would. Because you are approving an amendment to the CUP, the easement remains in effect, and it remains here. But it doesn't affect the number of seats that they could have. They could increase the number of seats. That was your question, right? Would they increase the intensity?
Well, my real question is, where in the documents that we're going to be approving tonight, does it say how many seats they can have so code enforcement can rely on that and the applicant can know exactly what he's allowed to have with this approval?
There's nothing in the conditions of approval that limit the number of seats.
But there is an exhibit that shows 60 seats.
And with 12 parking spaces, they could have 60 seats and comply with code.
Because if my recollection is right, most of our projects, we will give them the maximum occupancy in --
Additional 5, 10, 15 seats.
Okay. Well, we have our discussion. Could you look at maybe putting it down, and everybody knows what it is, and there's no question?
And what is the number that the commission likes?
I think whatever would be --
Whatever the parking lot.
I would talk to the applicant at the same time, not go back. But I would say whatever the parking lot -- but so we know.
I got a quick legal question on that.
Please.
Because we had our study session on conditions of approval. Would this be a condition of approval that could be in conflict with city code? Because if they were able to obtain extra parking spots, conceivably, they could increase their occupancy based upon the conditions of approval. And I'm now hesitant to put anything in as a condition of approval that can be changed, because they have a right by the code to potentially have higher occupancy if they so complied down the road.
Well, they don't have a right by code per se, because they have a conditional use permit that governs the operation of the use. So typically, if the conditional use permit included 12 parking spaces and 60 seats, they would need to amend their conditional use permit if they wanted to expand that.
Okay. And the reason I brought that up was the fact that the intensity increases, so any impact on the neighboring -- the neighbors and all?
I just want it to be enforceable.
And I -- oh, I agree. So we will start with discussion. Commissioner Brown will start at that end.
Yeah, I've -- as I overall look at the project, I'm very pleased with it. I noticed where all the requirements of design review were met between your last session and here, and so it does look like it's going to be a nice add. I am intrigued by the mirror for the egress, although I think that -- and maybe that could be a discussion with the city and the other owner, because I think the alleyway, as the owner pointed out, is owned by some doctor or Pete Wischny. But that could be something to be added on to carry forward with the other emergencies beyond the findings we're going to have to make tonight. So I'm supportive, and I appreciate all the detailed questions tonight, so we get this parking and capacity sewed up, and with that, I'm going to support it.
Very good. Thank you. Commissioner Tally.
So as I've alluded to during the questioning, I was very happy to see the issues that were raised in design review incorporated here. I think the support from both their current community and their future community was very nice. I think from the perspective of sizing the CUP, we simply comply with the code, which is five seats per parking stall, and that's the number. And then if they want to increase that, they can come before us and ask for an increase, and that seems to be the most reasonable. I recognize that's more than what's shown on their site plan, but that's also probably the simplest way to get there and the one without any questions about why we chose a number other than what the code dictates. I am curious what the best dish to order is, so we can talk afterwards, so I don't waste time trying to find it when I go. So good luck.
Commissioner Blackwell.
Yes, so I have just one question. I'm sorry, Amy, if you wouldn't mind. We didn't talk about the lighting in your presentation. There are two gooseneck lights that are proposed as part of the project.
Yes.
Commissioner Ruland, did you have a plan to touch on that at all, or can I just jump right into that one?
No, you can -- well, if you can jump right in.
Okay, great. If you think of anything, please add.
Thanks.
Timing on the lights and what types of light? Will the bulbs be the actual sources of light? What types of light, and how will they be controlled?
That's a good question. I might have to have the applicant provide those types of details, because beyond the design of them, being gooseneck lights, which you can see here in the picture, I don't think they have the answer of what type of bulb is in there.
Okay. Well, the lights will be above grade, street level, you know, cars will be driving by. And I'm just wondering, what are we doing currently on Del Mar after hours? Are businesses turning their lights off? I know it's pretty dark at night, but does anybody know if there's any sort of consistency in rule? Well, you go there after nine, it's pretty quiet, I mean, and it's pretty dark, but not every business has their lights off. And this has been a common point of discussion with newer projects of late. It is a concern of ours to have light pollution, and these types of lights can be kind of wild. I mean, they're, you know, in effect, they're floodlights, and they're shining onto a very visible portion of the building. So I think it's worthy of discussion if the commission is willing to delve into that.
Commissioner Ruland brought that up in DRC.
Okay.
I think he was actually absent on that one.
Maybe it was --
No, I'm sorry.
It was discussed.
Yeah, I mean, these are the pretty common gooseneck lights that we see across there, right?
Correct.
So they are bright, but because they're full cutoff, you know, even a little more than full cutoff, because they tend to be angled a little bit. It is a white surface, but we see that in other SCR buildings as well. So I wouldn't want it on all night. You're right, it could be bright, but I don't think that there's been a problem with those. In fact, they're a better solution than some other lights we've seen that, you know, maybe might be up lighting or something like that. So in that sense, they're, you know, they look nice, and they can be, you know, they still do that full cutoff thing. So that's why I was okay with it. But, you know, those are good points. Yeah, we should, might be worth something to take a look at overall.
And another add to that is there's residential use, there's mixed use along Del Mar, and I believe across the street, there's a residence upstairs that, you know, after hours, it may, you know, be a mild detriment to, you know, to their quality of life. It's something to consider. Perhaps we request the applicant would turn down those lights after closing. No need to have them on.
Yeah.
That'd be one way to address it.
Okay, very good.
That would be my feeling is, you know, when they're closed, the lights can be off. It'll be after 11 o'clock anyway.
Okay. Well, with that, I'm looking forward to another great addition to our community. I think that anything that we can do to invest into the synergy, Asian trends continuing along Del Mar. I think it's based on the history, the operator's history, yes, in another community, but their longevity in that community is a testament to their -- to something. They're doing something right. That is probably the hardest business to maintain and, you know, keep the doors open. So 14 years in Laguna Beach, that says something. And with the testimony you've heard from regulators of the business, I'm very pleased to see this restaurant come to town and looking forward to another option. And I'm also looking forward to hearing what it is that's so good. So maybe Mr. Tally can share.
As soon as I find out.
Okay, all right.
It's the beer. Commissioner Ruland.
Well, thank you. Yeah, it's always great to see people coming in who've got a lot of longevity in their business, and, you know, hopefully that'll come in here. Sort of a different, unusual restaurant compared to what we have. I'm excited about it. And they, I think they did work well with us in design review. I take a small exception to my commissioners. I think that there's some things that maybe we could have gone into more, a little more detail with, because we -- these buildings, as we talked about in design review, they can be very difficult, because they're -- these are just square buildings without a lot of personality, and what we're trying to do is make them more Spanish colonial revival-ish, but it's easy to go too far and have it look, you know, poor, you know, as a result. So you want to do what you can, but, you know, not overdo it. But, you know, we have this black awning that we discussed in design review, and there was a little concern about that. Most of the black awnings you see are much smaller, and they're actually on more full-blown SCR buildings. And that with the black paint on the wood gives it a more -- they have moved away from the more contemporary design they first came to design review with, but there's still a kind of a contemporary feel because of that, and the supports on the awning, too. We don't really have a -- we didn't have that in design review. We don't have a great example out of here. I think we've got a photo of another business that's got those spheres, so some of that detail might have been nice. I think I see what they're going for, but we want to make sure that they kind of get there, you know, with that kind of detail. So, you know, I'm happy with the progress they made up to here. Like I said, I'm a little bit concerned, because once you do something on Del Mar, if it's great, we can use it as an example for other people to follow. If it's not so great, then people point at it and say, "Well, you know, that's what we did over there," and so, you know, let's still do it. So that's my concern with, you know, maybe we can nudge this a little bit more towards SCR in a couple of areas like that. But I'd like to hear from other people on the commission and design review members and see how they feel about that as well.
Very good. Commissioner Wu.
I like this project. I like the elevation, although I lament the loss of that wide canopy giving pedestrian a little protection. But I have no objection to this elevation design. I really want to support it, but my concerns are still on the parking. I'm not convinced. First of all, let's talk about the easement agreement. I read every sentence of the agreement, the document. I hear the statement that said they have twelve parking spaces. The easement agreement by the county clerk record doesn't say so. It says the easement will be reciprocal easement over and across the driveway located on a portion of each party. So the easement is really that one side can use the other side of the driveway to go in and out. It's not supported by what I see on the site. I see the signs saying this is a Missy's parking, this is an Amundtesser parking. You know, just as a common sense, someone has a lot in their parking space. Unless I see some document to prove the case, I can hardly believe that they've given up those spaces, as we just recognize those spaces, those additional three spaces behind a Missy's, they're not exclusively for Brussels. So maybe they both can use it, but in that case, can they still claim that they have full credit over the spaces? I don't know. I'm not sure. I tend to be conservative on that. The accessible parking is a little difficult, but I think it can be made work. There's electrical box in the way of the accessible drive aisle. It's a tight turning. There's a little bit depth constraints, maybe the end of the parking needs to straddle the proper line and encroaching to the other side. I'm not sure. But I assume they can make it work after some improvement or minor change to the site. But then on Lot 7, it has nine spaces currently, and we just saw a map with 10. Those -- Lot 7 is a typical downtown lot, 40 feet wide, 100 feet deep. And I just did a quick math. I never failed my math testing in my elementary school, so I think you can trust me on that. At a 60-degree, it does not have room for 10 spaces with the minimum width of eight feet and a six inches. It cannot accommodate it. If we put 10 spaces there at a 60-degree, each space will be about eight feet wide. It's not wide enough. I'm not sure that can fit. So with all of this said, I intend to, you know, I can support this project, but I'd like to see a limit on the seat. If they present as 55 seats, that requires 11 parking spaces. I really don't see 11, but let's say I consider this nine on the lot 7 and one accessible on the back of the lot, and maybe a little bit of credit for that three spaces if they can both use it. These are all not 100% sure, but I give them the benefits without. For all of that consideration, I'd like to limit the seats with the number of 55. And if they can actually prove that they have exclusive rights over these three spaces behind a Missy's, then they can increase the seats, not my fault.
Commissioner Kozinski.
Thank you. Well, I'm supportive of this project, and I like the changes proposed by the applicant. And I just want to thank Bistro and welcome them to San Clemente.
Thank you. Okay, we have Commissioner Tally.
I just wanted to respond to some of the comments that we've heard here. First of all, I glanced at the reciprocal easement agreement, and certainly will defer to counsel here, but there is a large statement that's in there that incorporates the recitals, which is really important. I mean, that's an integration clause that's bringing those into this, and that -- those recitals specifically mention the conditional use permit, the requirements of parking, and all of the things that we're, you know, somewhat concerned about here. And so I don't think it's prudent for us to not follow the advice of counsel, and if counsel tells us that we have a valid easement here that satisfies those conditions, then I'm willing to give them credit for those three spots and think that that's the wise and prudent and kind of good business course to do. The second thing is on the parking spaces there. Well, I certainly understand and probably agree that that seems really tight when I'm looking at it. My inclination here is to trust the expert opinion that's been brought to us by both the applicant and also by our planning department that's looked at those. And if they believe that they can have the number of spaces that they've so indicated, and they in fact do have those number of spaces, then I think they can have those spaces. If they can't, then I think we need to condition our occupancy based upon the number of spaces that are available to them. So I would propose that we have a not-to-exceed number of whatever the number is of spots there. There's, what, 10, 13? How many seats -- or how many parking total?
They could have up to 70.
Okay, so not to exceed 70, but in the event that there are less parking spaces available, that number is revised downward to comply with the code.
Yeah.
I mean, that seems like a way to ensure that if they only get nine, if they really have nine, then they don't get credit for having something they don't have.
Is counsel comfortable with that?
Yes, Commissioner, that's certainly a reasonable approach. Thank you. Okay, I'm going to jump in for a minute. I do want to make sure that we give staff the direction to work with the applicant on any kind of safety device or mirror, or whatever the solution might be to address the crossing of the sidewalk with the exiting. And Commissioner Kozinski had brought us some pictures of the signage and all on the site, and also coordinate that that signage is updated to match the
site and also coordinate that that signage is updated to match the agreement for parking and make it accessible to everybody. We haven't really talked about the time change on the permit, but what was in there is appropriate with the other restaurants we've approved. It extends the hours longer than what they are now. I'm comfortable with that. As far as the lighting, if you could coordinate that. If there is any restriction on Nicks or Cotton's or El Ranchito for their lighting, this should be the same agreement. We didn't talk about...
Commissioner Crandall?
Yes.
When you say it should be consistent with the other restaurants, are you talking about the time that the lights need to be turned off?
Yes, I am. In other words, if there is anything in their conditions of approval, it should be appropriate that we require the same rather than leaving it unaddressed.
Would you be willing to instead have a condition that's related to their hours of operation?
We did that for the outlets.
Yeah.
We did for that, but I don't, I personally don't remember what we did on the other restaurants.
We can do it here.
So I want to be consistent.
Let's start consistency.
We conditioned the outlets that the lights turned off when they closed.
Is the applicant comfortable with that?
More.
Okay. Then yes. We didn't talk about the trash enclosure, but that's kind of an ongoing, and the rear is ongoing, working with staff on, and I'm comfortable with that. The awning color I had mentioned during design review, it's a personal preference, so I wouldn't hold them to it. We're getting a lot of black canvas awnings going down Del Mar. We've got, I think the wine place has it, Cotton's has black, a number of others. I'm really a prefer the green that...
Brussels sprout.
Is at the hotel site, but that's, I'm not going to hold you to that. That's just a personal preference. But I'm certainly in support of the project. And this doesn't apply to your project, but at some point we probably need to address mixed use because this is a mixed-use zone. We've never talked about hours of operation, noise control for once we start getting mixed use coming in there. And we probably need to address that in the future. Do we have another light on Commissioner Blackwell?
I do. And I know I've, I know I've made a statement in support of this project and I stand by that statement. However, through discussion, another point came up, two points of interest. First is the hours of operation. We heard another project recently across the street at Zouz and we had a very fruitful discussion on that project and we're also excited to see that one come to town. But there was discussion on the hours of operation and in the staff report, you can see that the operator was conditioned to operate on Saturdays and Sundays from 8:00 to 11:00. And the reasoning is relative to his proximity to residential uses. And this particular proposal is adjacent to residential uses and it does have outdoor seating, which would potentially impact those residential uses on Del Mar. So I'm wondering, this is the applicant's proposal, these hours of operation, but I would just suggest that we consider being consistent going forward, especially in this area, especially right across the street for the most part. I mean, just keep the hours of operation consistent with one another rather than give one extra hours and not the same sort of hours to another like operator, especially one with outdoor seating. So I would, I would suggest that we seriously consider that. Right now, the operator is proposing a 12:00 AM close time versus Zouz that was recently approved to end at 11:00 on Saturdays. And they're adding, they're not open, it looks like Brussels will not be open on Sundays in this case with Zouz. Actually, yeah, Zouz was going to be open on Sundays and they did have limited hours. So I'd suggest we do that. And then regarding the parking, there was another bit of discussion on that and started to think about it. Is, in the site, in the revised site plan, we show stall 11 in the rear and that was identified as accessible stall?
Yes.
So that's the one that, right.
That one.
Yes. And we also have discussed the ownership of that alleyway.
Correct.
And it's not part of the ownership of the current project site. To make this work for that accessible stall, there has to be safe access to the use. Will that rear access be modified to accept, because it's not shown in the site plan? If it is, I apologize, I must have missed it. Will that be the access point or will they be going around through the alley?
That's correct. So this application has actually been in the plan check process and permits are ready to be issued for the interior and tenant improvements. They have been working with the building department. So the plan before you reflex it in a planning concept review, they have submitted full plan check that has been approved through building.
Okay, so...
So yes, that rear door would be accessible.
Okay, so we don't need the safe route painted through?
That's correct. That's right. So what you're referring, through this back door.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
You're welcome. Good question.
Commissioner Brown.
Yeah, I just, as I look through all these hours of service, maybe we were a little too hard on Zouz versus the other ones that are, everybody else is 10 to 12, Nicks, South and Nicks, Plaza Del Mar. So I'm kind of supportive of the hours that they're proposing and would probably disagree with Mr. Blackwell on the hours.
Commissioner Ruhl.
Thank you. Yeah, with this discussion of the hours, I, you know, certainly neighboring similar properties, having similar hours seems, you know, more than fair. But at the same time, I know, I don't have my pocket general plan on me at the moment, but I know we've got some policies, I believe in the land use element, that talk about these borders that we have between these commercial districts and residential districts where, you know...
Transition zones.
Transition zones, right. And being sensitive to the residential areas and transition zones. And I don't think we have any of those policies listed in any of the tables that we have. So I'm not sure if it applies to this one. I think it would behoove the staff to, you know, tomorrow to, you know, take a look and see if any of those policies might affect this. But probably moving forward, when we've got situations like this that are right next to properties, particularly in these commercial zones that are next to the residential zones, that will want to look at, you know, consider incorporating those policies as part of our, the balance of making the findings. So just something for the future, you know, assuming that these hours are going to work for this place. Yeah.
I don't think Zouz asked for a later time. I think they asked for 11:00 PM, which is why they got 11:00 PM. I, so I don't think that we're being inconsistent in the hours. I think it was simply they didn't want to be open till midnight. Or at least that wasn't presented to this body. I don't recall us changing...
I remember that their business plan was not necessarily to be a bar, it was to be a restaurant. 11 o'clock was fine with them. So they accepted that. Okay, before we call for a motion on this, do we have a revision to condition of approval seven for the sound that more clearly...
So I have one from our attorney on the amplified sound. The use of amplified sound, including electroc, excuse me, electronically amplified sound of live, is the new word, music, human voice or other sound within a business, restaurant, bar or other commercial establishment is not permitted. This new addition. This prohibition does not include televisions, radios or reasonable background or ambient music.
Everybody comfortable with that?
No. Did I read the wrong one?
There might be a, there might be a later draft. We have multiple drafts of this.
Can we do that with approving a...
Let's get the real draft out there.
This condition can be just removed.
No, 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 no.
Well, we're voting on something, so we got to make sure we get it right.
Well, here's, here's the thing, they're still subject to the sound ordinances, right? Regardless of what they do or they don't do. So I'm wondering, do we need to talk about including or excluding TVs and that sort of thing because they're going to be, I mean amplified sound, yeah, because that's just too easy.
Let's get the final thing out to us here. Maybe they've got it covered.
Okay. Tally.
So this goes back to the study session. I paid attention. The code specifically deals with noise ordinances, right? So they could have amplified sound in there, but if it's over 50 decibels after 10:00 PM at night at the property line that emanates from it, that's a no-go. You get a code violation.
But you don't, you can have amplified sound, but you can't have live amplified sound, like a band.
Right. That requires a conditional use permit, correct?
Or a special events permit.
Or special, but that's in the code right now.
Yes.
So, so to your point, maybe we don't need this condition because the code already controls this, correct?
Well, well, it was for ease of enforcement that this notifies the applicant. That was the argument we were given.
But remember, we just talked about that, that this doesn't ease enforcement at all. They're still going to the code. You can't use special for provisions to short circuit, all of that.
Well, the, we, from a practical point of view, we so often have issues with amplified sound, all kinds of amplified sound. And it's true that we have our sound ordinances, I mean, that amplified sound or not, they have to deal with that. But because it's so easy to go over those decibels with the amplified sound, I think that's why we like to put this in here to make it clear to everyone. But beyond what we have in here right now, I'm not sure we need more because anything else would be covered by our normal sound ordinances. That's my thought.
Let me ask if anyone here has their sound ordinance memorized.
The other thing that Commissioner Tally's...
Because live entertainment brings a lot of people in and out the doors, the doors are opened more often, so there's more impact than if it's just an amplified jukebox. There's a flash, flash of the past there. Okay, so...
Let's see what council comes up.
What's the real wording that's being proposed here?
Go ahead. You read it.
Commissioners, it reads like this. The use of amplified sound, including electronically amplified sound of, insert, live music, human voice or other sound within a business, restaurant, bar or other commercial establishment is not permitted. Then there's this new sentence. This prohibition does not include television, radio or other reasonable ambient or background sound.
I'm comfortable with that.
I don't know how enforced that is.
Oh, I think it is. Is the applicant comfortable with that?
Yeah.
Very good. Okay, well, that makes it, okay. So do we have a motion? Commissioner Brown.
Do we have all the conditions that we were working on?
No, we had the other one.
Lights and, we have...
We had, light timing was just going to be consistent with other...
And parking, didn't there are parking... And then there are parking conditions that the seats are limited to, do we have that wording here now?
Okay, so we were going to have, of course, light timing was going to be, signage lighting goes off at closing. Can we, do we need to add a condition 13 then to, is it 13? What number would it be?
It would be 13, yeah.
13 for the light timing.
And we also had one for the signage on...
Signage.
The traffic sign.
Do we need, yeah, we should probably have a condition for coordinating the parking signing with the parking agreement and making sure the parking is available for this tenant.
May I propose some language? Prior to final inspection, parking signs on site shall be modified to reflect the use of stalls as described in the existing reciprocal parking agreement.
Everybody comfortable, okay?
What about occupancy?
Is the occupancy covered under...
That's the parking, right?
Effectively, it's already governed by parking spaces because it's a code issue, but if we want to put condition 15, that occupancy will be based on available parking.
Did you want to have a not-to-exceed figure, which had been discussed before?
I think it was 70 was the number that was brought up because that's the 12...
It's the 14 times 5.
14 times 5 is 70.
I know that one.
Okay, now do we have a motion, Tom?
I move that we, per resolution PC 18021, a resolution of the planning commission of the city of San Clemente, California, approving the conditional use permit 18353, minor cultural heritage permit 18354 for Brussels Restaurant to allow facade changes and the sale of alcohol beverages and to amend minor conditional use permit 062805, M C U P 18548 to modify the current hours of operation located at 218 Avenue de Del Mar as conditioned by the, the changes of condition seven as proposed by the city attorney. Conditional, condition of condition number 13 that the lights will be returned off upon when the business closes. Condition 14 that parking signage will be corrected and final plan check as proposed by the city planner, the language, I mean, as proposed by the city planner. And condition 15 that occupancy will be based on available parking, not to exceed 70.
Second.
You have a second? We have a motion by Brown, a second by Tally. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? No? None? So we have 7-0.
Good luck.
Congratulations. The next item is item B 504 Monterey Lane Cultural Heritage Permit, Jones Remodel and Addition.
All right, Daniel, we have this. It's all you.
Thank you, thank you.
See if you can take my time.
We will be on a short hold here until Commissioner Brown returns.
Get our paperwork and over here. Brussels sprouts. So my son reported that french fries originated in Belgium, so they should have the fries.
They should.
Because he saw the plan sitting on there.
Should we wait?
How are you doing, Larry? Hanging in there. As I told you the other night, my son really enjoyed that book. It worked great for great, so it was great. We went home after we had the session where we had the USAD, he said, "Will that look right out?" And I said, "Oh, you sleep this book?" "Oh, yeah." And then he came home at the, for the end of the year for somebody. It was a lot of fun. I pretended like I really understood, spout off some of the words about, you know, thought it was really impressive. We've got one of the fish cards if he ever wants to push it, pull it around the block. "Oh, yeah." Makes him do that.
Okay, we are back in business. This is item 8B, the Cultural Heritage Permit 17279, Jones Remodel and Addition. David Correio is the planner and we did receive a couple of correspondences on this that we received, I think, yesterday evening and this evening before the meeting.
Good evening, commissioners. Again, my name is David Correio, Assistant Planner. So the project site is located at 504 Monterey Lane in the residential high zone and coastal zone overlay district within the superior specific plan. The home is locally listed as a historic resource and was built in 1927 in the Spanish culinary revival style of architecture. The structure and site have undergone improvements such as a subterranean garage within the existing footprint, installation of drains, hardscape redesign in the front yard and repair of a retaining wall in the front yard, but no major exterior changes. The historic home is currently in its original footprint and sits on a triangular shaped lot. The lot has a higher elevation on the north side, right here, and slopes downward to the south side where the garage exists now, down here. So the image to the right shows a view of the front of the property from the top of So the image to the right shows a view of the front of the property from the top of Monterey Lane, looking towards the ocean. And here you see the existing garage with the living space level above it. The applicant proposes a two-story addition in the Spanish Culinary Revival style of architecture attached to the north of the historic home. The original footprint is highlighted in orange and the additions' footprints highlighted in red. Since the project is subject to the Secretary of Interior Standards, I will briefly explain what they are. So the standards were created by the National Park Service. The National Park Service protects cultural resources and promotes historic preservation at the local, state, and federal level. So in an effort to better preserve historic resources, the National Park Service provides the standards for rehabilitation as seen in attachment 5 in the staff report for projects such as additions. The standards are available to the city when reviewing changes or additions to historic homes. The intent of the standards is simply to preserve historic resources as much as possible and maintain a structure's integrity. It is a general plan policy and also a zoning code requirement that projects involving a historic resource be consistent with these standards. The standards for rehabilitation as detailed in the staff report require that the addition be differentiated from the historic portion of the home, that the alterations do not destroy the historic materials that characterize the property, that the new work contain compatible materials, features, scale, and massing, and if the addition were to be removed in the future, that it be possible to return the structure to its original condition. This is the front elevation viewed from the top of Monterey Lane. So within the dashed lines, you see the addition. The addition is to the right of the original home as seen here and is also higher than the original roof ridge by six feet. At the Design Review Subcommittee meeting, it was recommended that the applicant remove a Juliet balcony from the proposed wall, wall plane to improve proportionality. That was right here. It was also recommended that another Juliet balcony be removed from the original wall plane, shown here. Both of those recommendations were addressed by the applicant. This is the north elevation. Throughout the elevations, compatible materials such as a clay tile roof, wood windows, white stucco, exposed rafter tails, and wrought iron are visible. Another Design Review Subcommittee recommendation was to remove window shutters from the addition and the original home, which the applicant addressed as well. Here's the west elevation that faces the ocean. Wrought iron guardrails are proposed on the addition, which also helps to further differentiate the addition from the original. Since the original does have wooden colorful guardrail, guardrail on the deck, it is not represented here on this elevation. However, the original guardrail will remain intact. And this is the south elevation viewed from the lower portion of Avenue of Monterey. Currently, there is a low retaining wall owned by the property owner above the adjacent street curb and no sidewalk on the north side of Avenue de Monterey. Condition of approval 13A requires that the applicant provide a sidewalk easement unless a waiver is approved. Staff believes that the removal of the wall and construction of a sidewalk would create significant impacts to Avenue de Monterey as well to the site's historic curb appeal. Staff recommends that the commission remove, condition of approval 13A, to preserve the character of the site. If the condition is not removed, Public Works communicated to staff that a sidewalk waiver would be supported. So staff believes that the project complies with the general plan, the zoning ordinance, design guidelines, and is consistent with the Secretary of Interior Standards. Therefore, staff recommends that the Planning Commission approve this project. Subject to conditions, both staff and the applicant are available for any questions.
Thank you, David. Do we have questions for staff? Commissioner Blackwell?
I do, yes. Hi, David. Thank you for nice presentation. Can you walk us through the sidewalk matter? I'd like to have a discussion about that and why staff believes there is not adequate room or that, I guess the reason being it would detract from the character of, that's what you had stated.
Yeah. Good point.
Can you explain to me what your thoughts are on that and why you think it would detract?
So looking at the survey forms attached in the staff report, they do not specifically identify this wall as a historic character-defining feature. However, going through the design review process, we thought it would be a change, a going to be a change to the landscaping portion mainly, which would also result in a higher proposed fence slash wall to go beyond four feet from the curb. So that's the reason why.
What is the grade change, say, six feet in into the property? So if we were to push that wall back, what's the elevation change to the highest point on the property?
I do not have that information.
So, okay, well, yeah, come on up. Let me speak to the.
Yeah. Finish your questions for him, and then you'll have your opportunity to speak right after, David.
Thank you. So my question being, you know, if you stated a higher wall would be necessary, that tells me that there'd be retention needed for a slope, we'd be cutting into the toe of the slope.
That's correct.
And what is that elevation change? How much higher would that wall be?
It's unknown at the moment since it's not being done. But we do know in the past, there are projects that have a retaining wall at the bottom and a guardrail above that, so that would, that could potentially exceed the existing height, shown here.
Potentially. So we're not certain that it would be a higher wall?
That's correct. It's unproposed at the moment.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Commissioner Tally.
Yes, so part of the, part of the guidelines that we follow is to try to make an addition to a historic resource actually look like it's not part of the historic resource, like it was kind of added on and it could be separated out at the end, right? Which is kind of contrary to, I'm engaged in a remodel process right now and we want it all to look like it, you know, was there since the dawn of time. By creating the multiple elevations there, it looks to me like that has actually created that kind of concept that that was an addition to the house. I mean, am I looking at that the right way? That this was, instead of being integral to the house, it was, and I mean this with no disrespect at all, because I know it's important, that it was kind of an afterthought that was added on? Is that the idea behind the guidelines so that people think that when they look at it, so they see the original and then they see the addition?
That is correct. And then we do have an element here, the open trellis eyebrow above it, which you don't see on the original. We do see the guardrail as well, wrought iron guardrail, not matching the originals. That's, we have two examples there of how we help distinguish between the old and new.
In my, I want to follow up on Commissioner Blackwell's comment about the sidewalk as I guess I worry a little bit about that sidewalk would, it gets fairly close to the residence at one point there too, doesn't it? If you could go back to the site plan, maybe at the very start, the triangle. So where, can you point on that map where the sidewalk could potentially go? Let's say.
The sidewalk would probably go up to that point right there.
So it'd be a partial sidewalk.
It'd be, it would be a four-foot sidewalk.
Yeah, but we couldn't carry it all the way down because of the structure that's there, correct?
That's.
Well, that would be the requirement, that the structure be altered to provide that easement and sidewalk.
Okay.
So in other words, to provide the easement, then you have to go into the structure to do the, to make the motion. In fact, you have to modify the historic structure, particularly down here by the stairway and then further down where the yellow juts out where the house is itself. So that's a pretty substantial reason why you don't want to do the project because you got to cut into the house to get the easement.
Trust me. And we'll do that during discussion.
Okay.
Any other questions? Commissioner Wu.
Yeah, well, continuing on the sidewalk issue, is it an option for the city to have a narrower than four-foot sidewalk?
I don't believe, I think that's the standard width for public works.
Yeah, they're minimum standards for accessible, accessibility on the sidewalk. So that would be the minimum we could build.
But I see sidewalk on the other side of this Monterey Ray, and the narrow.
Well, it might have been built before current standards were adopted.
Okay. I just went through this. Now, typically, an applicant would go to a city manager to ask for this waiver. Are we going to make the decision on this waiver?
Since the CUP was coming to the Planning Commission and since the sidewalk would involve an alteration to an historic structure, we felt it would be appropriate for the Planning Commission to make this decision in its capacity as the Cultural Heritage Committee.
Does applicants, do you have the opportunity to go to the city manager to ask for it again?
No. If you require the sidewalk, the appeal would go to the city council.
Okay. Now, David, I see some comments from the public regarding the increase of the square footage. In your analysis, you say, you stated that it's an increase of 45, 43 percent. Can you walk me through step by step how you arrived this percentage?
So how we arrived to that percentage, we took the original square footage and, let's see if I'm doing my math right, and divided that number by 856, if I'm correct, maybe the other way around. But that includes the top, where we go here. So that includes the garage floor area as well and the top level of living space.
So garage is included?
It's included. Correct.
Do we call it a basement or first floor in this equation?
We're referring to it as a level, the first level.
The first level.
Yeah.
What about the garage expansion? We just had a staff waiver a couple of months ago.
So that was within the existing footprint.
That is existing footprint.
Correct. It was being used prior to that improvement as a storage area.
So that 500 square, 530 square feet expansion is counted as existing?
Existing growth floor area.
They are, they are the denominator of the division you used.
Correct.
David, that's not right. The existing house is 1,100 and so odd square feet, and we're adding, how much did you account?
Let's invite the applicant up to respond to this. He's part of this presentation.
Can I jump in here?
And, yes, please.
Okay. So I'm the homeowner. We did the garage, the garage, the garage is done.
Can you get the mic?
The square footage on the house is 1,100 and change. The addition is 856 square feet. So it's a mathematical formula to figure out the percentage. And I don't have a calculator in front of me, but I think it's about 43 percent. So that's that math that we're adding on to. If I can go back to elevation, well, this is a good site, I'm sorry, go back, right there. So if we add the sidewalk, we're going to take about that lower landing of stairs will have to come out, and then the driveway looks like a, is very contoured as it is, very steep, and you're going to, I'm going to dump everybody onto a non-ADA compliant driveway, and then that whole side of the garage and the stairs that go up the side have to go bye-bye.
Let's talk about that later. I only would like you to answer a question about the square footage and the increase. So you said that the original living area is about 1,100 something.
And some change.
You are adding 800 something. That is a 43 percent increase?
I haven't done the calculation. The overall calculation.
I just, I just did it.
It's the finished house minus the existing house.
Forty-three point seven.
Yeah. Doesn't count the garage.
What is, what is the denominator in this equation? Eight hundred forty, forty-eight?
The two numbers are eight.
Eight hundred forty-eight divided by 11,000 or something.
1,100.
1956.
1956.
1956. That's the, that's what they want to build, is something that's 1956.
When the house is done, it's going to be a shade under 2,000 square feet, right?
So this basement, the existing, well, this existing garage, as well as the garage expansion, they are all counted as growth floor area?
No.
That is correct, under a definition of, in the zoning code.
Yes or no?
Okay. Well, I didn't know that. I mean, that's him to speak to. I can tell you, we added, when we tore out a granny flat that was jury-rigged in there when we bought the house, and there was storage underneath there, and we made it a garage. We can park five cars in there.
Okay. Thank you. My question will continue with David. So in your report, you also said you want some exemption, you recommend us to exempt from a non-conforming issue here. If it were 43 percent and less than 50 percent, you don't need that exemption, do you?
At the moment, the exemption would be to exempt the historic home from the non-conforming section of the code. So in the future, if they come back and the city supports a 7 percent increase to the 43, they will not have to ask for the required waiver or permit for that addition.
So you want us to exempt this structure from conforming to our current standard for a future, an hypothetical expansion in the future?
No, no, no. They're saying that it's non-conforming and setback currently.
Right.
And he's getting a, basically, he's going to be grandfathered in with this exemption. And it says you.
We also added that as well, yeah.
Because we're not going to take any action for a hypothetical expansion in the future.
No. That's absolutely correct.
So you're saying in the future, if they add another 7 percent, they would be okay?
They would still be subject to Secretary of Interior Standards, which at this point, we don't, we don't have that assessment.
So you're saying the clock starts when you have this application, which the expansion of the basement is considered existing?
Existing footprint.
Now, what happened to, when a staff approved that staff waiver to expand a basement, that expansion, that was not, was it looked at? Because that was also an expansion.
So that was expansion within existing footprint, again, and per the code, the staff may approve a waiver for additions within the existing space.
Are you suggesting that an applicant can make a multiple increase as long as every time it doesn't exceed 50 percent, he would be okay?
Going through the proper process.
Which is a discretionary process, and we said we would have a full review again of it.
But you just told me that in the future, if they can add another 7 percent, that means those expansions are counted incremental and cumulative.
But that's not what's in front of us tonight.
I understand that.
Well.
I'm asking, I'm asking the staff to confirm that how the city is calculating and measure the addition over time with multiple projects, because I believe there is a magical date back in 1996. That's a starting clock. From there, every addition will be counted, and whenever the total addition increases the floor area to 50 percent or more, that will trigger the non-conforming issue. It may or may not matter at the end of day here, but I just want to get the facts straight.
Yeah. Commissioner Wu, so to clarify, that would exempt the non-conforming setback on the front that you see on your development standards table in the staff report. So we currently have two non-conforming setbacks for the primary structure and the garage. So we'd be exempting the historic structure from conforming to today's code.
Okay, thanks.
Commissioner Blackwell?
Yes, so David, there was a, there's a note in the, in the exhibit, the applicant's drawings on page nine, that indicates that the owner agrees, well, it reads that the owner agrees to and proposes to work with city planning to determine best methods to address landscape production. So basically, there was a discussion about reducing, I believe through the PRC, maybe trimming back, thinning out, reducing. So how did that discussion go and what came out of it?
So the applicant agreed to remove or, and or trim any landscaping in order to meet, to satisfy that, that condition and meet the goal of providing the more visibility to the historic structure.
So the intent was to expose some of the architecture?
That is correct.
Was there selective, was there a design proposed or were, were trees that would be pruned, identified?
We do have a landscape plan at the very end of the set of plans you have before you, that show an area that would be focused on, but there's no, there's no specifics.
Okay. Now, is that going to be something that's at the discretion of the city planner? Will you be going out to the site and inspecting and signing off? Will there be some oversight by the city landscape architect?
That is correct. And we also do have forty-two inch maximum height for plants and bushes.
Okay, all right. So just to be clear on the sidewalk again, the only part of the structure that would be impacted would be the stairwell right there to the right, would be a corner of it. That's the only part that really encroaches into that four-foot width of a sidewalk, is that correct?
I know that, that's correct. And there may be, again, without having the plants in front of me, maybe a potential to have an impact on the lower, lower end alone.
Next to the garage.
Lower left, yeah.
According to the site plan, it just misses it. That four-foot dimension is carried through the entire frontage on the site plan. And it looks like it's just the corner of the stairwell that is clipped by it.
Yeah.
You can see it there, yeah. So it really wouldn't be, you know, any impact to the structure. In fact, the site, there's already improvement in front of the house now. There's already concrete, there's been improvements there. The only area that would really require any major modification would be along that wall that we discussed earlier. It'd be, it would have to be moved back.
Possibly, but I would have to interject that the apron would probably have to be totally redesigned also because the side slopes on the apron have to meet all ADA once you get in to building that sidewalk. You'll be up in a minute.
Okay.
And we may have some impacts here too on this portion.
Well, according to the site plan, that portion misses the four feet if that drawing is to scale, and it looks like it is. So I wanted to examine this because it's a discussion worth having. We have had this discussion in other cases with other projects and it's an important one. And I think it's worth thoroughly evaluating the.
What, do we have a idea of when that retaining wall went in originally? Is that original?
That was not found. We did do some research in that. And again, the survey form did not, they do not identify the wall as a historic character feature.
In other words, the historic surveys didn't point it out either.
No.
But it'd have to be just.
You would think with the grading and the site that it's probably an original retaining wall. And if that's the case, if we don't have to touch it, that would certainly follow the Secretary of Interior Standards.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Okay, Commissioner Brown?
Yeah, I'd also point out, we, we ran into this issue down in this area before and we actually modified or inserted, because there's an issue over in Santa Barbara, a couple of blocks away, and put into our general plan where it was acceptable in certain areas to only have a sidewalk on one side of the street. In other words, we had to build some flexibility into the general plan, which had floated the zoning ordinance about this because of the way the original part of the city grew and was developed over the years so that we, you end up with a street there, Monterey, which is only like twenty-five feet, it's not even a thirty-foot street. And so therefore, the way that whole street developed, almost to a, almost to a zero lot line. So we have some, we have some discretion from our general plan that says, yea, verily, you can have, you know, not have a sidewalk on one side of the street. And so that, that was driven by Santa Barbara, right over where Mr. Culbertson lives there.
Okay, Commissioner Ruland?
Yeah, I'm going to make everybody happy and ask about math again. So I'm looking at page four of the staff report. And we're saying that the project is a forty-three percent increase of the original gross floor area. And the original gross floor area was something under twelve hundred square feet. And the addition is eight hundred some odd feet.
Yeah.
That eight hundred some odd feet is more than fifty percent of twelve hundred.
That's correct. So we, if you, let's see, page, you go to page two where we describe the square footage of the existing living space and square footage of the garage portion. We took those two numbers and added, since per zoning code definition, gross floor area includes garages.
Right, but, but my point is, is what we're saying here is we're looking at something that's a forty-three percent increase, but it's not a forty-three percent increase, it's over, over, it's whatever eight hundred and fifty-three square feet of, unless just under twelve hundred square feet is, which is something like, I don't know, seventy some percent?
Yeah, I, I understand your, your explanation. We do add the eight hundred and twenty-five square feet of the garage to that twelve hundred and something square footage. So that makes it forty-three percent.
The single-family residence is eleven hundred and thirty-six square feet. The attached garage adds eight hundred and twenty-five, which is still under twelve hundred square feet.
That's nineteen hundred.
Sorry, sorry.
That's nineteen hundred.
Yeah, so nineteen hundred square feet.
That's forty-three.
So eight hundred, okay. All right, so, so in this case, we're adding in the garage.
Correct.
That's what makes it forty-three.
We'll continue this part of the discussion during, the discussion part. Any more questions directed at David? Commissioner Wu?
Just questioning actually before the, the council. Do you have a zoning code with you?
We do.
Can you check it? I, I refer you to a very specific chapter, you can sort of look it up. It's seventeen, that's zoning, point seven-two, yeah, seventeen point seven-two, point zero, zero five zero. That is regarding repair, alteration and expansion of non-conforming structure. You go down to I about additions, and then you go down to four about a measurement, and then you go to C, measurement of multiple projects. Can you read that paragraph to us?
All right, per municipal code that the commissioner referenced, it's headed measurement of multiple projects. If a building has been expanded more than once, regulations are applied based on the total amount of floor area that is added to the building on or after March twenty-first, nineteen ninety-six. For example, if a building is expanded by ten percent in nineteen ninety-seven and expanded by another twenty percent in nineteen ninety-nine, then the building has been expanded a total of thirty percent since March twenty-one, nineteen ninety-six. Thank you.
Okay, we will continue that one on, during discussion. And let's have the applicant make his presentation here.
Good evening, I'm Steve Dobie, the architect for the project. A couple things, I don't know if you have questions for me first, but a couple things. The sidewalk on Monterey is on the other side of the street. The, the, would be the south side of the street has a sidewalk that goes down. This particular property, where you saw, well, right there in front, the sidewalk would be in front of the garage if there was a required sidewalk. It's a steep site. It's very steep from the top of the hill all the way down to the bottom. The elevation at the bottom corner, can you put up the, the site plan or am I?
Perfect, thank you. The elevation from the walkway right here to that corner is about, the drop from the finished floor of the garage is eight feet to this corner, which is right about here. It, it goes from, well, it's higher than the, you're higher than finished floor at this point, and that's at the lower floor of the garage area. Then up here, it drops down steadily all the way down, all the way down the hill. But the elevation change here on the hillside, it drops, it drops eight feet at this point here down, which is more than a two-to-one slope. It's, it's just solid. If we were to put a sidewalk in there, it would take about an eight-foot retaining wall on the, on the inside of the sidewalk. It's also a very steep walk down that hill. I believe from just doing the archaeology of these particular sites over all these years, that wall was built when they built the house. There's no way to hold the backyard up if that wall was not built. The elevation is at the very top from the street, say the street level, to the backyard level is about sixteen inches at that point. But then it just gets, it gets much higher because the yard is flat on the north side of the house. So the wall goes from thirty-eight inches at the, at the corner where the steps come down, all the way up to about sixteen inches at the top. So it's a very steep grade going down there. And the elevation change from the backyard to the street is as much as five feet. It goes uphill. It slopes uphill from here, from, it slopes downhill from here to the house. So the house is actually, the finished floor here is going to be lower than the height of, than the height of the top of the side. To me, if you were going to put a sidewalk in there, it would be impossible. We've already talked engineering, we've talked to Zach, we've talked through that whole process of what we do if we're going to remove the wall and if we're going to put in a sidewalk, what would it take? Engineering doesn't believe it, it could be done or should be done. So that's, that's obviously something we're going to have to get through with the waiver. The, while I'm going through some of the questions, as far as making a house, this is interesting because I've worked on historical houses all over Southern California. Architects like Wallace Ness, Wallace, Wallace Neff, Richard Neutra, I've worked on their houses. In some areas, especially up north in Santa Barbara, if you work on a Wallace Neff house and you're doing a remodel to it, or you're doing something to it, they want it exactly like the Wallace Neff house that's sitting there. They don't want any alterations from it. They don't want it to look different. In San Clemente, they want it to look different, which is fine. So this is the second Ole Hansen house I've done for Dave. And we want it to be a presentation of the house. We understand the fact that they want to make the house look somewhat different. But as far as materials, as far as styles, we try to, we try to proceed along the same lines, same line that Ole Hansen did. And so again, we've really worked hard to do that. The first house we did was tremendous success on Algonon that was approved by you guys about a year and a half ago. And so I have any, any questions you have for me, I'd be happy to answer.
Any questions directed at the architect? Commissioner Wu?
Yeah, did your client hire a land surveyor to?
Yes.
Do you have a survey map?
There was a, we had a surveyor that was a consultant, but we don't have a, we don't have a, a, a site plan yet by this.
You don't, do you have a contour map?
No.
Okay. Also, Sherry asked a question for the staff, or David, or maybe you know. The applicant stated that we talked to Zach. Zach doesn't believe that a sidewalk can be practically done. When we reviewed the Goldschmidt residence, the, the, the proposed residential project next to Goldschmidt House, Zach was also here telling us his opinion on that. Can you confirm that Zach said it's not a practical?
Commissioner Wu, I can tell you that the Director of Public Works told me that there would be no Public Works staff here tonight because they support the waiver of the sidewalk. I don't know if Zach said what is attributed to him, but I can tell you that the Public Works Director specifically told me that he supports the waiver in this instance.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, I see no more questions. Thank you very much.
Sure.
We will close the presentation portion of the meeting and open the public comment. We have one person who wishes to speak, Larry Culbertson.
I hope you all got my, my letter. I made some points in there, some that you were talking about, like that seventeen point, seventeen point seven-two point three zero. I think you're reading that all wrong. It exempts historic houses completely, fifty percent or whatever. So that's, I think you have to look at that. I'm opposed to this project for the reasons that I pointed out in the letter that I sent to you. In a nutshell, it's too big and it's too visible. Adding eight hundred fifty-six square feet to eleven hundred thirty-six square feet, I don't know about adding the garage, I, I think you're, they're wrong on that too. But that's like welding a truck bed to the back of a classic three fifty-six Porsche. It might be legal, but who would do it? The Secretary of Interior Standards allow for additions to historic buildings, but they're not supposed to outmass them. A seventy-five percent addition that sticks up above the existing building is overmassing. The applicant, Mr. David Jones, invited me to tour 504 Monterey, Monterey Lane. I'm very thankful for that. The walkthrough convinced me that it would be possible to do a smaller addition that would not negatively impact the historic home. In fairness, I must say that I've seen the quality of work that the applicant has done on another OLE at one twenty Avenida Algonon and on this subject property as well. He does very, very good work. It's very high quality, but I still cannot support this particular project. The Design Review Subcommittee wanted to get the opinion of a historic preservation expert to confirm that this project would not negatively impact the resources, the resources' historic integrity. The applicant did not want to spend the money. I argue that we absolutely must have such a report to protect our resources. I'm so tired of hearing the argument that people cannot live in small houses, therefore we must permit doubling or tripling the size. Well over half of our two hundred four historic residences have not been enlarged. Generations of San Clementeans have and continue to raise families in these small houses. Frank Dennison raised four children in five oh four Monterey Lane. We all know how extremely desirable San Clemente has become. People are paying over a million dollars for eight hundred square foot beat-up Ole Hansen houses. We need to encourage those houses to be rehabilitated, but if we allow them to be mansionized, we will lose the character that we've all loved about San Clemente. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry. Anyone else want to speak? Now you will call, close public comment and open for discussion.
Chair, can I ask, can I ask Larry a question?
Sure.
Sure. Larry, you stated that this product, this project will result a degradation or reduction of the Historic Resource Status Code from three D to five D. of the Historic Resource Status Code from 3D to 5D. What is your base of this assessment?
Well, there's a letter that I.
Up at the mic, Larry.
Yes.
There's a letter that I sent to the Planning Commission in 2013, and I have given it to you again. I just happen to have two copies of it. I painstakingly went through the 2006 Historic Resources Survey, and I found that something like 50 of the houses had dropped in value. You know what I'm talking about, the little number that's on the upper right-hand corner of the DPR form? And about 50 of them had decreased in value. So I went through and read each of those, and I can't remember the number, but there was something like 15 or 20 that they specifically said that this house has gone down in its rating because of an addition. So I've got copies of the letter that I sent.
Are you a professional who is eligible to this?
Pardon me?
Are you a professional who is eligible to do this type of assessment?
No, no. I was trained as a biologist. Yeah. Here you go.
And I'll just ask one additional question to Larry.
Yes.
In your layman's opinion.
Sherry.
If there's an addition on a historic that doesn't affect the historic, and it's taken off and removed, does that historic return back to its original?
Certainly, if you could, if you could take it off without, without arming the building, certainly.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Discussion. We will close comment for public and open for discussion. We're in open discussion.
So, yeah, I, I certainly understand the challenges of raising a family in a small house. I've got two boys and two bone retrievers, and I think they want to do me in. I think my biggest concern with this is what Commissioner Wu was referencing earlier with the city attorney regarding the limitation on, on increasing the size on a non-conforming structure. And I just want to make sure I understand, because we kind of talked about it when we were talking to, it's now Assistant Planner, right? That just, is that correct? That just got changed recently? Congratulations.
Lieutenant Pollard.
Yes, yes.
Congratulations.
If it's a historic structure that is completely exempt from the 50% size increase since the, you know, line in the sand was drawn in 2010, going back to 1996, if, I guess if that makes sense. So if we approve this regardless, and we make the finding that it's a historic structure regardless of the size increase, it's exempt from, from that prohibition on size increase. I guess that's, that's a question for, for counsel.
Yes, Commissioner, I believe that's correct. This is an application not for a minor CHC, but for a, a standard cultural heritage permit. And therefore, as you, just as you said, these particular limits on expansion, if you so deem them to be, are exempted from this application.
Because we kind of talked about that earlier, about we were approving something for the future, and I think maybe that, my read of this was, we need to approve it now because of the fact that it might, that the cumulative additions over time might have exceeded the 50% allowance that's allowed for a non-conforming structure. I just want to make sure I'm, I'm looking at that properly. We're not giving them carte blanche into the future. We're simply ensuring that this application before us is, is able to proceed. Is that, am I looking at this correctly?
Yes, Commissioner, I believe so. The distinction between a minor and a cultural, excuse me, a minor and a standard cultural heritage permit is important. Cultural heritage permit comes before you at the Planning Commission, involves this, this form of discretionary review, which is why there's certainly not a carte blanche for expansions in the future. Each time, it would have to come before the commission for that type of, for that type of review.
Okay. Thank you. I, I think the, I've listened very carefully to the discussion of the sidewalk, and I do think that removing, at least in my opinion, removing that retaining wall would, would change the characteristic of what the home is viewed from, from the street. And I think part of the historic nature that we're trying to preserve, that we're entrusted to preserve here, is trying to preserve that, that holistic view when you're looking at it from the outside in. And as I kind of alluded to earlier, it's not just four foot, as I'm kind of learning, you've got to do quite a bit more to make the sidewalk actually, you know, compliant with the, the relevant ADA and other, and other criteria. And I think the fact that Public Works didn't show up tonight and didn't want to put a sidewalk, an narrow sidewalk put in there speaks volumes to me because I think we've seen them, I can't remember the last time that they didn't want to put a sidewalk somewhere, so that's, that's good. I certainly, I'm very cognizant of Larry, of your concerns. I think it's important that we look at the historic nature of these houses so that we can undo, if necessary, in the future. From a practical aspect, you know, as we're starting to see some of these Ole Hansons that are a million dollars plus, and we want people to take care of the historic part of that house, we're going to have to give them the ability to increase some of those living spaces. And I, I speak to that simply because I, I've been in that market, and I've looked, I ultimately didn't purchase an Ole Hansen-type house, but that was something that weighed upon my family very heavily. And, and I think in this case, we're doing something that preserves the original intent and allows future generations to enjoy that while also adding some practicality to the, to the property. So I can support that, assuming, and I think counsel answered my questions on the legalities as such.
Okay, we'll start at this end this time. Commissioner Kucinski.
I'm looking at an email here by Dee Hindman, and he has some concerns regarding the height of the building and the views. Has Planning looked at that to address any impact on people's views in that Palmet Street behind, behind this house?
Commissioner Kucinski, there, there are certain areas where the general plan designates view corridors where that type of analysis is conducted, but in this particular area, there is no designated view corridor for the general plan, so we did not look at view impacts on private properties.
That it?
That's it.
Commissioner Wu.
Yeah, a few items to talk about. First is about the square footage and how much the building has increased. Because the City Zoning Code calculate the square footage increase cumulatively. So the 530 square feet expansion in the base, in the garage is part of a numerator, not a part of a denominator. And therefore, if we run the math again, is a five, 800, the expansion is 856 plus 530, that is 1,386. Original, the baseline is 1,109, the living space, plus 295, the original parking garage. The total is 1,404. So the total increase is 99%. With that said, we can still exempt, as you, as you understand, and that is correct. If we find this is compatible, if we find this is acceptable, the whole project is not subject to this whole chapter. I look at the building massing. I really don't care about people, I don't mind about people expanding their garage underneath, in a basement situation. I look at the massing increase, so the massing will increase 800-something square feet over the existing garage, which is on the street side and the living, so that would be 1,400-something. So that's about a 60% plus minus, but I think the building massing is acceptable. It's behind the existing house, away from most of the public view. It's higher than the existing structure, but it's not that prominent from, from the view for the public, from the public streets. So it doesn't bother me. The elevation, especially the east elevation, I don't care for that. In, in the design review, we were presented a elevation that doesn't match the floor plane. So we asked the applicant to work with the staff, especially on the second floor. And this elevation economy is not satisfactory to me. I think the horizontal high window above the bathtub on the second floor, that's not Spanish style. Typically, you have vertical windows. The other window over the landing of the staircase, as well as the horizontal window, they're too close to the corner of the building, and they, they're not consistent with the Spanish colonial style. And they're so close to the eve. So the whole top portion just seems to, so cramped, doesn't look very elegant to me. Back to the, to the sidewalk issue, I wish I have a sidewalk there, but if the Public Works Director supported the waiver, I would defer that to him. However, I look at the drawing here, on the landscape sheet, sheet number seven, there are little sections, from the top to the bottom, there are one, two, three, four. And I look at the little sections, the section one would have, if we were to move the, move the dirt back by about four foot, the section one would result in about a one-foot retaining wall. The section two, at the top of the driveway, April, would have about three feet. Then this pattern will repeat from three to four. You start from about a foot and then down to about three feet. So on average, I would say, at least according to this landscape architectural design, the wall would be on average about two feet. And I used the list of circumstance for the city manager can waive the sidewalk. I found that there's one situation that's close to be, to be, to be used here, that is, if the earthquake will result in a retaining wall three feet or higher, and then that qualifies for a waiver. But we don't have a contour map here, we can't ascertain, the sidewalk will probably collect the beginning of exterior steps, and, and it's very tight. On the other side of Monterey, there is a narrow sidewalk. So if people are able to walk down the street to where the driveway is, then they can cross the street and use the other side of the side, other side of the street, and there's a sidewalk goes all the way down to Victoria. So I hope I can have the sidewalk, but, but I would defer that to the Public Works. So after all, I, this is not at the quarter I'd like to see, but I will, I will support it out of necessity, I guess.
Commissioner Wu.
Thank you. Quick question. This is outside of the architectural overlay of the Pier Bowl, correct?
It's within.
It is within. So, okay, so they are required to do SCR. Okay. Yeah, just to start with the sidewalk, I think it's true, the general plan wants us to be pretty aggressive with having sidewalks on both sides of the street. We had somebody a couple months ago with a brand-new house, that we pushed hard on that. But the general plan also acknowledges that there's places, given our streets and the way they originally laid out, and the original buildings, that that may not be appropriate. And I think that that's the right decision to make here. In fact, even though it seems to crowd the sidewalk a bit, and it looks a little odd, it is the way that was originally built. It's kind of like some of the original character of the town itself. So I would have no problem with the, with the waiver on 13, removing condition 13A. I don't think there's a problem with that in my mind. I will mention that, you know, with this, it does have to be SCR because we're an architectural overlay, but even if it weren't, we tend to say it needs to be Spanish colonial revival. Formally, I don't know that there's anything in our zoning code that says it has to be, but the HIP requirements don't require it. We could actually have a, a more modern extension here. This is just kind of for, I think, a little bit of future reference. It would actually be possible to have a more modern-style building as long as it's compatible. It probably uses stucco and similar, you know, forms and that sort of thing. And that might actually help us at some time in the future to have something of size, but that gives less massing impact. You know, because the SCR architecture itself has its own massing. So just kind of a, maybe a note for the future for us to remember is that we don't.
Does that mean you could have a window affair like the horizontal window that's not SCR architecture?
Yeah, well, it's, it doesn't, you know, it's a design guideline that would say it should be vertical, in this case, the architectural overlay, so we might want to see that more vertical. But I, I could also see that as sort of a reference to the small rectangular window on the left. We just kind of doubled it up on the, on the right. So it's sort of a, kind of a reflection of, of that. So I can see that as well. I think with this, one thing I look for, because I actually think we maybe don't do it quite enough, we haven't done it quite enough in the past, is that distinction. It's interesting, it's interesting to hear about Santa Barbara. They do wonderful work up there, but they, they kind of want everything to look sort of seamless. There's, there's some nice elements like the railing and such that make it separate. I think, you know, maybe we, you know, it could have been more, but we tend not to do that in this town. That's probably, but that's something that I, I kind of look for. You know, maybe could have been some small elements, I don't know, bevels or that sort of thing, just to call it out. I'm a little concerned about that when we do build these extensions for, per Larry's observations, we don't want this to look like this is the whole structure and we're kind of overwhelming it, and that kind of a thing. So having a little more distinction might help with that as well. Overall, you know, Larry, again, has made wonderful comments like he always does, but as I look at this, I would like to see something smaller, you know, use up more of the backyard, could have been used, you know, it would have to be sacrificed. But as I walk the site and looking around, it's like, well, do I think that would overwhelm? There is some mature foliage there. I can't remember if we have conditions to maintain that foliage. We have some for landscaping.
We do.
Yeah, so, so that, that shields it quite a bit in the particular configuration that it's in. So all those considered, you know, I think I'm leaning, leaning towards it. I want to hear what the other, other half of the room has to say. But, you know, that's sort of how I feel about it. If there were any tweaks, I'd say, you know, make it look a little more distinct from the original structure might be nice, so. But that's it.
Thank you. Okay, I'll, I'll just make a quick clarification, that we have the guidelines by Henry Lenny that are specific to Spanish colonial revival and their guidelines to follow. And I don't, we went through design review, we mentioned these and wanted the applicant and staff to work together to make it work. I hope they still work on it a little bit. The balance is a little off. The whole symmetry of the existing house, windows typically in the center of the wall. I think a little refinement's necessary, but we don't want to design it on the dais here. But that said, Michael.
Yes, thank you. Okay, well, I had the privilege of restoring a 1930 Spanish colonial. Took five years, and it was just a, quite an adventure, and it was an amazing experience. It really was. And so we did everything from the top-down retaining walls, roof, lath and plaster, you name it. Learned a lot about restoration. I learned about the importance of maintaining character. So those points have been addressed tonight. The applicant, back to the sidewalk, the applicant did walk us through some of the challenges, complexities with the wall and the sidewalk. You know, I, I think there's value there. I don't necessarily think that would be the best mechanism to forego the sidewalk. You know, in construction, it's just cost. It really is. And, you know, this is not a difficult piece of property to work with. We're not talking about, you know, a cliff house here. We're talking about relatively, there's some topographic diversity, yes, I acknowledge that, but I just don't think that cost is really the factor. However, Commissioner Tally made a great point about the character and preserving that. Is it a significant element in the grand scheme of things? Maybe it is. Would it be lost if it's moved back five, six feet? Probably not. But what, what would be impacted is the mature landscaping. So a lot of that would, if not all of that, at least in Exhibit Two, Exhibit One shows that. Exhibit One shows that landscaping, all of that, most of it would, at the street side would be interrupted. It would be removed. And we lose a lot of what we're intending to do here, and that's to maintain a balance with the existing landscaping, mature landscaping. We also want to open it up and create some visibility to the architecture. So I would just ask and hope that staff really takes time and special consideration in doing that, making sure that, you know, what's pruned is pruned selectively, exposing some of that beautiful architecture, screening some of the new portions, but also showing some of it off, too. You know, I think that the numbers tell a story. And to Mr. Culbertson's very valid points, you know, this is a significant increase to the overall square footage compared to, you know, what was there versus what we're going to end up with. In this case, you know, I agree. It's off of the sidewalk. It's the rear of the property. We're looking, the most visible portions of it are going to be, it's going to be the short side of the architecture. We're not going to be looking at the long side of it. We're not going to see as much of it. Somebody is going to. I don't believe that, there's been a lot of discussion on that point of view. I haven't seen any exhibits. From what I see in our packet here, I just don't see a significant visual impact caused by this. You know, I'm a little on the fence with the, you know, I'm definitely concerned about the, you know, the amount of massing on paper, the square footage, the increase. It's a concern to me because it, you know, the points have all been made by Commissioner Wu, Mr. Culbertson, and it's a concern, but that concern has been addressed, I think. I think the orientation, placement of it, the existing landscaping staying in place in a condition that that landscaping be maintained and replaced if it's ever, if it ever ages out or gets diseased. We just want to make sure that we have elements there that will soften, you know, the architecture. Not hide it completely, but soften it. So, you know, I can get behind this project. I can support it. I am comfortable with the fact there is other, there is existing sidewalk on the opposite side of the street. I know, you know, we're not meeting the general plan's intent, but this would be, this would be a special case. So I am, I'm in support of this project.
Okay. Commissioner Brown.
Yeah, I, let's get back to the original page one here is what, can we make the findings? And I think we can do that. I think we thoroughly discussed a lot of the issues here tonight, but as I go down and all the six required findings, as I look at it, we can make those. I think everybody's, I don't want to mirror image a lot of the other people's comments as I look at this particular drawing in front of you. It balances, in other words, you have a little bit of higher addition on the right-hand side, but it's balanced by the fact that there's two-story with a garage on the left. So there's a massing balance per se. And then you look at the light, the lot, where as Mr. Blackwell pointed out, it's way in the back. You have a lot of vegetation and three of the drawings have comments on the site plan of forest foliage and the city, you know, plant architect being engaged. So I think we're going to get a balance in the triangular lot. So I think it's supportable. It's interesting, I was heartened by the presentation you shared with all of us that came from one of the commissioners, how differentiation, I think it came from you, Jim, of the very good review on how things look different yet modern yet that complement. It's an interesting comment from the architect. We're in Santa Barbara. They want it absolutely perfect, and we want it by the Secretary of Interiors requirement to be similar yet different, which is probably one of the hardest things, I guess, you guys at design review have to come up with. And interestingly enough, the godfather of all our design review, Henry Lenny, is from Santa Barbara, and he kind of put in the design review guidelines to differentiate. And so it's kind of, you know, he comes to this town and everybody genuflect because he wrote our design guidelines. And so here's a Santa Barbara guy that's a differential guy who lives up there where they don't allow it. So, you know, it's, it's the way it goes. So I think I can support the project. I can make the findings. I think there's a lot of consideration. You look at the slope of the lot and that sidewalk, and that's why we struggle with sidewalks. Probably in the newer areas, we don't. The one up on the hillside, we did a few months ago. But when old Mr. Ayers, the city engineer, laid out the streets in 1927 or '28, they weren't thinking sidewalks. And the topography here really drives it. The city engineer has said this is not good. And I know Mr. Bonnigat after eight years, that's an astounding comment for him to make. So I think I can support the project the way it stands. Thank you.
Thank you. In a second. I want to comment on a couple of things. The sidewalk, one thing we aren't thinking about is by pushing that flat concrete away from the street, we're all, we're accenting the front setback of the house. The house is going to look closer to the street when you take that landscaping back, and it's going to appear to crowd that street even more. And I think that's probably for me the biggest disadvantage to the sidewalk. So I have no problem waiving the sidewalk. I do want to address the neighbor's letter that was sent to us. She was concerned about view. We don't take that into account, and all I can do is sympathize her with as far as construction's going on. She just had some construction on another property not too far from her, and this one would apparently be starting in the not-so-near future, but in the near future. So I just want to say we did take that into consideration. And had this remodel encroached one or two feet over the existing house, this would be a no. This does not change the existing historic house other than a perception of size. It's intact. This can be taken off. Would that happen? Probably unlikely, but it doesn't damage the existing house. So I think that's another plus. So the only thing I want to make sure of is that the attorney is comfortable with if we're not using the calculation to approve this because it's a historic. Is there anything in the resolution that needs to be addressed so it shows that we disregarded the 50% calculation and exempted it by the fact it's a historic? And you're comfortable with that? I just want to make sure that that's covered.
Commissioner, before I answer, I was going to double-check and make sure there already wasn't some sort of reference. So let me, if you mind, we need to settle with staff and just give it a quick look.
Section three, B1.
Okay.
Of the resolution, page thirteen.
Yes. B1 makes this point. It references the chapter, references the fact it's a historic structure, and therefore exempted.
I just wanted to make sure that with all the discussion we had about it.
Yes, thank you.
You're comfortable with it. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion, but I'd also like to stay or ask the city planner, but for clarification, the city of San Clemente does not protect private views by ordinance. And that's the way it's stated. Would you confirm that for the record?
Yes, I would confirm that.
Yeah. We only have the specific view corridors that are laid out in the general plan that are required. So there is no public or private view protection. With that, I'll offer...
Excuse me, I have another question.
Commissioner Wu has a comment to make before the motion.
On the report, page seven, about the low wall and the sidewalk, again, in addition to the waiver of the sidewalk, another issue is the low wall, the current low wall is within the public right-of-way. And there's a condition to ask the applicant to move the wall back to the property line, which is about two feet. Do we see any value of doing that? Waiving the sidewalk is one thing, and moving the low wall back to the property line, that's related, but it's a little separate issue.
The...
It's just in the right-of-way, right?
Yeah.
It's in the right-of-way.
So they have to do an encroachment permit?
Well, yeah.
They say they would have to, I think.
Zach would have it put on the deed that that wall is encroaching into the right-of-way, and it'd be recorded on the deed, and then the city has the right, if they ever want to move their right-of-way of the street, to demand that the owner take it out.
Who's going to pay for it?
Owner does. In other words, the owner's accepting the fact it's encroaching, and the city's saying, well, and he'd have to process it through engineering. And the city says, okay, but it's got to be recorded on the deed for perpetuity. Whoever buys the property in the future has to realize it. And at their risk, they leave it there rather than...
I just signed one of these three weeks ago.
Okay. So they're having it done and have it...
And I had to acknowledge that I got to remove it within the time. If the city removes it, I got to pay them for it. I mean, it was the encroachment permit. It was...
Okay.
So you have to sign it, then it gets recorded.
But if we're waiving it, does the city still have the...
We're not waiving that, I don't believe. We're just, we're allowing them to have to issue the permit.
Okay. We're allowing the low wall to stay. But in the future, if we want that back, the applicant will pay for the demolition.
Right. And engineering encroachment permit shall be in place, right?
Yeah.
And that's exactly how that permit...
It's fifteen C. That's condition thirteen C. We were not deleting that.
Chair, about your concern about the language of the nonconforming, once we approve the CHP, the whole chapter of seventeen seventy-two regarding nonconforming does not apply.
And I just wanted to make sure that's clear in the resolution.
Okay. With that, I'll...
Thank you.
Oh, we, the attorney has one comment.
Yes, per the chair, if I may. The chapter seventeen seven point seven-two wouldn't apply to this particular application. I do not, we're not saying that for subsequent changes the applicant may want to make to the house, that it would not be in the commission's purview for, if a cultural heritage commission, a cultural heritage permit were to come back for you, that you could then look back at seventeen seventy-two for those particular changes. So it's only exempt for this particular application.
Correct. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Brown.
I move that the commission approve resolution number PC eighteen dash zero-two-two, a resolution of the planning commission, the city of San Clemente, California approving a cultural heritage permit seventeen two-seven-nine, Jones Remodel and Addition, an eight-hundred-and-fifty-six square foot, two-story addition to the single-family home included on the city's list of designated historic resources located at five oh-four Avenue to Monterey, with the addition that condition thirteen A be removed.
Second.
Commissioner Rowan, second. Motion by Brown. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Passes seven zero. Our, thank you. Good luck to you. The next item is C, focused land use plan, LUP amendment. Ms. Leah Meyerhoff is presenting this. And you will need to do a little education, I think, for some of the new commissioners on this, so.
Yeah, we will. Ready to proceed? Okay. Carl Steele here, senior planner, Long Range. Some good news to start off with. The coastal commission certified the city's land use plan on August tenth. So our land use plan has been certified by the coastal commission. That's excellent news. And so as part of that, in June, the city council provided direction to staff to immediately follow certification of the land use plan with an amendment to address two specific things. And so we have prepared that land use plan amendment, and we're preparing it for public review. Under the coastal act, that requires a six-week public review, so we're trying to get that out as soon as possible, which basically what it came down to today. So we're getting that out. And here tonight to present the land use plan amendment and discuss it with you is our contract planning staff, Lesleya Meyerhoff, who's our LCP manager.
And the big question is, at what point in time will we have an LCP in place and operating?
That is the million-dollar question. We will talk a little bit about schedule tonight.
Good.
Good evening, chairman and commissioners. It's a pleasure to be here tonight to talk to you about the local coastal program. A local coastal program or LCP consists of two basic components. An LUP, which is the land use plan, which is a set of policies, and then the implementation plan, or the IP, which contains the regulations that are intended to implement the policies. So those two components together constitute an LCP. All California cities are required to have an LCP. And the city of San Clemente is one of the remaining cities in California that is still working on their LCP. It does not have a certified LCP to date. The city has had an LUP since nineteen eighty-eight, and that was comprehensively updated in nineteen ninety-six, and then again, most recently in June of this year. The city has had a draft IP or implementation previously in nineteen ninety-six. However, it was never certified by the city council because they could not reach agreement on the suggested modifications that the coastal commission was imposing. So the LCP applies only to the city's coastal zone, which is shown here in the shaded gray area between basically the beach and Interstate Five. It constitutes approximately 15% of the entire city and contains five miles of coastline, approximately 20 acres of beaches, and 15 public beach accessways. As Carl mentioned, earlier this year, the coastal commission, at a public hearing in Cambria, approved the city's land use plan comprehensive update, and they made numerous modifications to that document as part of their review process. The city council in June of this year adopted the coastal commission modified land use plan with the caveat that they would come back and revisit a couple of issues that were not fully resolved prior to acceptance of the commission's suggested modifications. And so that is the focus of the land use plan amendment that is before you tonight. The two primary areas that are the focus of the land use plan amendment pertain to the new definition of major remodel, which is in the LUP. And the second item is a site-specific general plan, land use, and zone change that the city council has provided direction on as well. So the first item is, again, pertaining to the major remodel definition, which is somewhat similar to the discussion you were having on the previous item, where you're looking at changes to a structure over time as being cumulative. In this case, the major remodel definition is not just square footage or floor area ratio, but it's also changes to the exterior walls of the structure, the roof structure, the floor structure, and the foundation. So each of those structural components, as well as the floor area ratio, would count towards a cumulative change assessment. And so the city council directed us to look at what other cities are doing with regard to this major remodel definition and use that as a template for going forward in a land use plan amendment. The way that the coastal commission modified your land use plan was they inserted the date of nineteen seventy-seven, and it's a starting point from which cumulative changes would be assessed to a structure. Nineteen seventy-seven is significant because that's when the coastal act became effective. So the rationale for not supporting the nineteen seventy-seven date and seeking to amend that through this process is outlined more fully in the staff report. But in summary, the key points and the key rationale here is that no other city in California has this requirement that nineteen seventy-seven be used as the basis for cumulative change assessment to an existing structure. The second primary rationale is that tracking these kinds of changes would prove quite onerous and potentially unenforceable because many of the changes to structures that have occurred over time did not require discretionary permits from the city, and thus there would be no way of actually fairly calculating who's reached that threshold and who has not. So as part of a compromise, if you will, with the stakeholders that were engaged in the city's LUP update process, the city council agreed to revisit this issue... the city's LUP update process, the city council agreed to revisit this issue at the same public hearing where they approved the land use plan. So as written, the land use plan amendment would have 19... Excuse me, 2018 be the starting point for cumulative change assessment. And that's specific to the coastal zone, whereas the 50% calculation that was mentioned on the previous item is for outside of the coastal zone, and I believe 1996 is the starting point there. The second component of the land use plan amendment is to basically reestablish the underlying zoning and general plan designation for two parcels on the southmost end of Coronado Lane. The coastal commission changed the zoning to mixed-use four, which is residential and commercial zone. The city council provided direction to change that back to residential high and to remove the visitor-serving commercial overlay to exclude these same two parcels. And the rationale for this amendment is that these two parcels have previously been designated for commercial land use for approximately 20 years. We did some research, and there's never been a commercial use that was developed here. The city council feels that it's not a viable location for commercial because of circulation patterns and past record here of a lack of viable commercial business developing in this location. And so council has directed staff to proceed with changing the zoning back to residential high, and that was done, I believe, in 2014 as part of the general plan update. So the specific parcels in question are shown here. Here's Coronado Lane, and there's the two parcels that are... that have been changed to mixed-use four and would be restored back to residential high. We're providing an overall outline of our anticipated schedule. Just by way of background, as Carl mentioned, the city council directed us to begin working on this in June, which we did. We have been working with coastal commission staff. We've had a teleconference with them, and we've provided a draft of the land use plan amendment for discussion purposes. Last week, we presented an informational update to the coastal advisory committee on this topic with our meeting here tonight and our request to you to start a six-week public review and comment period. We anticipate the closure of that comment period on October 31st, and then we, as part of the council direction, would take the item back to council, along with any and all public comments received by the city during the six-week public review and comment period. Following that, we expect council direction to package the land use plan amendment for submittal to the coastal commission. They would then have 90 days to schedule the item for action before the full commission. And that puts us at about March 2019 timeline. So with that, it is staff recommendation to adopt Resolution 18-023, releasing the draft land use plan amendment for a six-week public review and comment period beginning tonight and concluding on October 31st, and then bringing the item back to the city council for review and direction. And that concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Brown?
Yeah, I think the change for the date was discovered, I guess, late in the process. I think we've even had a public outreach meeting, and Liliana and Carl were actually down here in the community center, and I think they're on... Well, they've heard their comments and concerns. I guess they're taking it aboard. So we're getting some positive feedback from them on this issue? Or you don't know? They're holding their judgment?
It's... You know, it's always hard to tell until you make a formal submittal where things are going to end up. But they're aware of the city's concerns, and we've asked for documentation that other LCPs have this requirement to start at 1977. They've not been able to provide that to us to date, so we think we have a strong case for changing that date.
The other question I do have is Coronado Lane has been in play... I've been in this commission eight years, and it started eight years ago with Coronado, when we had our first joint meeting with the city council and the G-PAC and us. I think we have a four-hour meeting. We spent one hour on this street in 2010. And the same thing, the consultant was saying, "Okay, you... Nothing's happened here. Why don't you rezone it to residential?" And then, to give you some background, about that time, Shortlifts came in, which was zoned for a visitor-serving hotel, decided to change, and they wanted to put senior housing, which is in process right now. That got us over the finish line with our housing element. So we got approved housing element out of the deal. So when we went to coastal commission, and I went with the staff up at Long Beach, and we talked all about our coastal element and our general plan, they accepted that, but said you had to compensate for it. So then we said, "Okay, we will override the G-PAC, the general plan advisory committee's suggestion, and we'll change Coronado back to mixed-use for visitor-serving." And they bought that. And we kind of considered it like a 50-year CD, because you're right, you can't develop it down there because you can't park it unless somebody's willing to take their building down and spend $7 million or $8 million and put a parking structure down there. So we... And so we pressed on with that, and we, the commission, recommended the council that route, and that was our rationale, because there was a linkage there. This is information for you.
It's good background. Thank you.
The way it went. So then, right after the general plan was approved, council then directed us to change Coronado once again back, for some reason, to residential high. I'm still befuddled by that, because I don't think it's really good land use planning. There's something ulterior here, but that's beside our purview, I guess. But that's kind of... So now we come back, we get a land use. Now, you'd be approved by the commission and the coastal commission, and they change it back to visitor-serving. And so we're going through... This ping-pong ball has gone over the net about five or six times here. And so are we going to stand away of some... I mean, the rationale there hasn't been developed, but there was a reason why it's kind of a good thing we didn't develop, because the coastal commission is happy, we have something visitor-serving, but in fact, we can't do anything about it. It's a 50-year CD. So this is not the end story here. We're going to... If they want to go out and change it, then it goes back up to coastal, and when we get our LUP changed, they're willing to bet you it's going to go back to mixed use. So I just want to give everybody a background, because a lot of you commissioners are new, and three of us have been through this merry-go-round about five or six turns in the last eight or 10 years. For you people, I just want to let you know that this is not the end story here, okay? Thanks.
Thank you.
Enough. We've talked about Coronado, Carl, Coronado Lane for about cumulatively 20 hours in the last eight years.
Very good. Do we have specific questions, or we're going to have a discussion period also?
I do have questions.
Okay. Commissioner Blackwell?
And why don't you tell us what... How you really feel, Commissioner Brown?
Just what it is. It's a mystery.
Just save it for discussion.
It's just not good land use, is what I'm saying, which is what we're about.
That's true. I agree. I'm interested, Leslie, in what the coastal advisory committee had to say. You noted in your report that this was presented to the committee. What were some of the comments or concerns the committee had?
We, as part of that informational update, we also provided an update on the status of the implementation plan, the sea level rise vulnerability assessment, and then also the grant that was just submitted last week. So the discussion actually focused more on those other items and were much less focused on the land use plan amendment itself. There was some discussion about the zone change in particular and why the 1977 date was important and what the elements were that contribute to the cumulative change and how it's broader than just the floor area ratio or square footage. It was an interesting discussion, and Commissioner Wu is obviously there, so he probably shed some light on that, too.
Were there any comments that were made that were requested to be pushed forward for further consideration?
There were, yes. There were unrelated mostly to, again, the land use plan amendment before you, but I think there was a lot of interest in some of the sea level rise adaptation planning that the city's embarking upon and an interest in looking at reestablishing shoreline monitoring program that the city has had, I think, previously 10 years ago, and using that to monitor future sea level rise in the city predominantly. There was also some interest in more opportunistic beach sand projects and getting that program in place if it's not. And I'm not certain yet if that is in place. That's something that we're in the process of researching.
We just did an opportunistic sand issue two years ago. So, I mean, the triggers are in place, I think, within the city to do that.
It wasn't sure... I wasn't sure if all the regulatory permits are in place. There's typically four permits you need to have an opportunistic program.
We had them in because when we got the opportunity from the San Antonio River, we could act fairly quickly on that 12,000 cubic feet we got, or whatever the amount it was. I think they... But Tom Bonnica can tell you in a heartbeat that we have them all.
Yeah, I need to check with Tom on that.
Thank you.
Do you have questions for, or do you want to do discussion?
Yeah, my question... Yeah, I do have questions. Two questions. First, you talk about other cities. Can you tell me what other cities do? What are their starting dates in Orange County or maybe South San Diego?
So there's not complete consistency in various land use plans. They... There's no real template for them, and so... Which I think can be a good thing and a bad thing. So in this case, on this particular topic, the city of Solana Beach is one of the most recently certified land use plans, and they have in their date... They call it a bluff-top remodel, not a major remodel, but it's basically the same definition, and they use the LUP certification date as their threshold, and that's what we've proposed in this case.
And the coastal commission accepted that?
The coastal commission did certify that date. Yeah, so they're aware that that's the basis of our rationale for going forward with a similar LUP certification date being the starting point for that cumulative change assessment.
Okay. My second question is, what are the benefits of residential high over MU?
The benefits? I think that I probably have...
If it's requested by people, what do you think... Why they want it, and what's the benefit to them?
I think it's a residential high right now. It's functioning that way. The council direction was just that that commercial designation was not successful previously, and so they didn't want the coastal commission... You know, they called it spot zoning. And I think the council felt strongly, because of the general plan process, that that was not an appropriate change for the coastal commission to make on a very localized basis in this city.
Does a change of zone give the property owner a better opportunity to develop something?
I... You know, I don't really know. So the mixed use and mixed-use four, which is what coastal commission changed it to versus the residential high, they have the same allowable residential density on a gross and a net acreage.
Yeah, it already allows residential.
Correct. So the mixed use would allow for commercial as well. But, you know, the reason why this amendment includes this provision is because commercial has not been viable in the past. That's my understanding, and I'm new to this process, and there's obviously a lot of history for what has worked and what the city's desires are. So if there's others that want to chime in, they might have more knowledge about the specific zoning question you're asking.
Carl, would you?
I can chime in. I would just say we have specific direction from the city council to change it back to residential high. This is also just a change that was made in the land use plan. We would still theoretically have had to change the general plan and zoning as well. All the commission did was change the land use plan. So there were... We... If the city council had approved it as the commission provided it, and it was certified, and we didn't have this direction, I would be coming back to you... We would be coming back to you with the general plan amendment to implement this change that the commission made. But we have direction from the city council to make this amendment, to not make that change and not do that general plan amendment. So this is the direction we're following, so we have our marching orders.
Okay, thank you. Okay, let's... Oh, excuse me.
Per the chair, if I may. Leslie is correct that during the, I believe it was the June 12 city council meeting, there was some discussion about the concept of spot zoning surrounding these two parcels, and that was something that we looked into afterwards. And the zone... The land use designations, as it is by... As it is now with the certified LUP or as proposed in the amendment, neither of those approaches constitute spot zoning for very much the reasons, I believe, you know, Carl just mentioned. One, these are land use designation changes. There's going to be subsequent zoning that will set the limits on height, use, what have you. And I believe there's also a specific plan that could be amended. Also, the designations right now, either as they exist in the certified LUP or as proposed, they fit within a patterned general scheme of the area, so they're really not being targeted for any particular advantage or disadvantage to the parcel. So I just want to make sure that, for the record, that, you know, as it is now or as proposed, it would not constitute spot zoning.
Okay, well, we'll close the presentation. I want to get public in here to get their comments.
I just want to question to the attorney, what's physically on the spot now is a hotel. So I guess it's nonconforming. Is that correct? Seahorse Inn, is that right?
No. Commissioner Brown, what's permitted on the site presently is residential uses, condominiums. They use them as vacation rentals, which is allowed in the zone, but the permitted uses on the sites are residential.
Look, it's a lot all the way down to the corner there, and there's an empty lot, and then there's the hotel on there, too. Is that not included in these spots?
Yeah, it's a separate site.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so let's close the presentation. Public comment. Mark McGuire's been very patient, waiting for this. So you're up.
Good evening, Chairman, members of the commission, and welcome new Commissioner Kozinski. This is my first time to speak in front of you. I'm Mark McGuire, shivering resident of San Clemente. I'm here tonight to speak primarily on the proposal to change the Coronado Lane back. And so it's going to be 20 hours and 3 minutes at least on this topic. I would like to just briefly, and I know I'm using precious time, I am concerned about the remodel definition as well, not just how you add 50%, but also that certain things are considered remodel, new roofs and whatever that I think we've... During this six-week period, we really need to drill down, that we don't tie ourselves in a way that makes certain things characterized as new development that really is maintenance and repair, for example. But that's something that can be going on during the six-week period. I also would say, from a process standpoint, what concerns me is that I think you guys should be allowed to weigh in after the six-week period. And people have commented and tried to talk about some of these things, and then come to you, make the case, just like you would on a general plan or a zone change, and then you guys make your recommendation to the council, as opposed to going straight to the council. Because we're kind of... Right now, we're putting this out for six weeks, and I'm not going to try to talk you into not putting the proposed LUP amendment out as is. The commission... The council has told you to do that, but you guys eventually are going to have to weigh in on the merits of what's being recommended. So with my minute and a half left, what I would tell you is that in 1989, when the last general plan was done, all of Coronado Lane was zoned, designated as a mixed-use street. Then the specific plan is still has it designated as a mixed-use street, but you also are allowed to do all residential on that street if it's below five units. You can do all residential, but it's still currently a mixed-use street. So this is a change in the rules that have been in place for over 20 years. And we made the case on behalf of the owners of those properties to the commission that this is an opportunity for visitor-serving, commercial uses. It may not happen. It's already happening, frankly, on one of the two properties because it's a STLU. It's a vacation rentals that has synergy with the Seahorse Inn, which he also owns, and he owns the empty lot there. So he's had a vision. He's owned this property since the mid-'70s, that there may be an opportunity to do commercial uses. It doesn't have to be storefronts. There's commercial uses that include hotel uses, for example. So I guess, again, this is just kind of baffling to me that this came up as something that was proposed as an amendment. We'll comment during the six-week period, and I'd like to come back in front of this commission to make the case so that you guys... commission to make the case so that you guys can make the recommendation to them.
I'll give you a little more time.
Well, I appreciate that, thank you. So, again, from a process standpoint, from a process standpoint, if, I would recommend that at the end of the six-week period, you guys have an opportunity to see what comments have been made, and you guys can make your recommendations to the council at that point as to whether you think the LUP amendment should go forward as initially proposed and commented on during the six-week period, or whether there are some changes that you think are meritorious after hearing from the public and the opportunity to kind of get into some of the details on this. And I'll sit down, but if you do want to talk about the maintenance and repair, which is the other half of this, it's a critical issue that we don't, by the time that this implementation plan eventually is approved, that we don't allow things like more than 50% of roof repair, all of a sudden puts you into new development, and if your house is only 10 feet from the canyon, or 18 feet from the cliff edge, all of a sudden you've got to go 25 feet or 15 feet. That would be devastating to Southwest San Clemente. Thank you.
Very good, thank you very much, Mark. So, we will close public comment, and I would like to have you guys address the process we're going through and why it's not coming back here after public review.
Regarding process, it was just the council direction that we follow the path that we are recommending. I don't think there's a reason it couldn't come back to you, but the direction was just to take it to city council at the end of the six-week public review and comment period. And I think maybe it was a timing issue just to keep the process moving in an expedited manner.
Okay. I guess the only thing we could do is be to forward a recommendation if we chose to, to have it come back here. We couldn't demand it or pass anything, but we could send a recommendation. So, we'll consider that possibly during discussion here. Thank you. Okay, discussion, Commissioner Tally, we'll start with you.
I'll be brief because I have to leave shortly. I think we've been, we concern ourselves with land use and many of the issues that come before us, and I think the city council, as the political body, has directed certain actions that need to be taken by this. First, to kick off the six-week review period, which by their schedule looks to be, you know, they're trying to be very proactive on that, and secondly, by dictating the process that they want to have followed, which I think eliminates us from coalescing the reviewed, the reviewed items and the comments that come back. I can only assume that the council is then taking it upon themselves to address all of the comments and feedback and to incorporate that into the final recommendation that's forwarded to Coastal. And I think I make that thought, at least I reconcile it with myself, is that a lot of these issues, specifically that you bring up, are probably more political in nature than what we get into on this commission. Definitions of the remodel and what triggers are being used, what dates are being used, those seem to me to be policy questions that they're probably elected to resolve, and so I guess I'm comfortable with the fact that they're going to synthesize the comments and hopefully put the best proposal forward to Coastal, and then, you know, I guess we ultimately see what Coastal says when it comes back. Regarding the zoning change, I think Commissioner Brown, you know, discussed the ping-pong ball that's probably going to get beat back across the net a couple more times. So, hey, council wants us to do this, they've directed us to do this, I think that's, we've been told what we need to do, and we'll see what Coastal says, and we'll probably be talking about it again.
Okay, we'll start down at Commissioner Wu.
Council asks us to authorize the publication of this draft program. They don't even ask us to provide a comment for that, so that's my understanding. So, I will support the staff to publish the draft for public comment.
Commissioner Wu.
Yeah, I'm all for opening a six-week comment period. I guess my question is, is there, as far as the deadline for this, I think you had a date of March on there. Is there a reason for that deadline? Is there some state requirement or something like that, that March, if I'm not mistaken, is when we have to have it complete? Or is that just how it works out, given the direction from council?
Coastal Commission has a mandated timeline, they have to act on the application once it's deemed complete, within 90 days of the completeness determination.
But there's nothing, there's nothing that is rushing us to say, we need to get them looking at that before, you know, the end of spring or something?
I think there's some interest in trying to have these issues resolved prior to submittal of the IP, the implementation plan, which we continue to make progress on, and that'll be before this body, probably sometime middle of next year or the fall of next year. So, I think, you know, the city council's intent was to have the land use plan amendment fully addressed and certified by the commission and brought back to the council before we submit the IP.
Okay.
Just to make sure there's not any loose ends, so to speak.
So, to the rest of the commission, you know, my concern with asking council to send it back to us after the comment period is just, you know, you're adding at least two weeks to that, you know, probably, you know, maybe four or something like that. So, you know, say we slow down the process by a month. It doesn't sound like there's an urgent deadline that we have to make, but do we want to slow this down by a month over these, you know, two issues? It's two lots at the end of Coronado, and then really just changing the date for the nonconforming structures.
My view is, you know, the designation of Coronado is council-directed, and that goes through. I think, where I would think you'd want to see a review, maybe, is coming out of the comment period, like Mark McGuire says, the devil's in the details here of, is it a roof remodel or replacement? What gets lumped in there is how finely you tune that, and do they want-
But it doesn't actually change what we have right now, it's just changing the date as when it begins. It's not changing the meaning of when we would do that. So, we're really looking at, we would look, actually, now that I think about it, we're looking at perhaps redoing that whole part of the zoning ordinance, and I don't think that's what council wants us to do.
No. I'm just thinking that the devil's in the detail of the data.
For these relatively minor things, do we want to slow this down by a month, and recommend the council to come back to us? And I'm, normally I would say, yeah, let's have it come back to us, we should be looking at it, but given the length of time and the extent of these changes, I'm not sure whether we want to, you know, go through that or not.
I will jump in real quickly, and, you know, whether we give a recommendation or not, I personally, to the opinion, there's some, a lot of good knowledge on this committee that, commission, that have been through the general plan process, have been through the whole thing, and there could be a lot of questions raised during public comment that we may not have anticipated, and that having it, at least an eagle eye from this committee or this commission is probably a little short-sighted, and I'm very comfortable saying that, whether we recommend it or not. Commissioner Blackwell.
Thank you. Just to be clear, did you say you were in support of looking at it again?
I'm saying that the city council should consider us looking at it. Whether they choose to or not, that's fine, that's their decision.
Yeah.
But I think as a, just a position, I think there's a lot of good knowledge here that would help city council out in making their decision.
Could we just make a recommendation to them?
We could.
Yeah, I'd be in support of that. After all, it's a, it has been a very long land use discussion, and so, a couple weeks a month, it's not detrimental, there's no deadline for us to meet. It's our, it's a gesture by the planning commission that we are interested in continuing the discussion and providing helpful input. So, to Bart, to Commissioner Crandall's comment, yeah, we could get a lot of comments that are very solid and valid, valid, you know, comments that we did not anticipate, and so to have, have that discussion again before it goes back so we can apply a little bit of, of course, staff is going to, you know, look at each comment and make recommendations as well. I think it would be nice to come back and just have a chance to add our two cents to it before it goes. Couple weeks, it's not a big deal, really isn't it?
And the intent is to be in support of the plant, of the city council, to help them out, give them an extra eye. So, do we have a motion?
I will make the main motion.
And actually, the recommendation could be through, not in the motion, it could be through staff passing that information along.
I could add one thing as well, the commission, before the end of the public comment period, the commission could provide comments to staff as well.
That's certainly an option.
We would welcome the input through that part of the process.
That would affect the schedule, and that would-
There are residents who are concerned about this issue as well. As you know, we had many people come to the public meeting, as Commissioner Brown mentioned, we had hundreds of letters that came in during the suggested modification six-week public review, which was back in April. So, we have people very concerned about this issue and want it resolved as soon as possible as well.
I actually like that idea because it does, sounds like it wouldn't slow down the process. Are you saying that we could take, during the six-week review period, after five weeks or so, we could take what comments there are, take a look at them, you know, have a session on it, and then say, hey, this is, this is what we see, something like that?
I'm not saying that. I don't think I can provide part of the comments and unveil them that way. Commissioner Wu, and but what I would say is, we welcome the commission's input, the commission may provide direct, you can provide input to us as part of the public process.
I understand you're anxious as to get it back to council, but I still think that we should have it scheduled. I would take a straw vote and recommend that city council consider it comes back to us after the comment period.
We're happy to assist as long as the task is given to us.
Yeah, and if-
I actually think the designation of these two parcels makes a sense because no one knows the specific situation of this land better than local people and better than San Clemente. Coastal Commission is trying to do a top-down approach and just label it differently. I think we have better knowledge on that, so it makes a sense to change it back, to be, to stay consistent with our general plan, instead of changing our general plan to fit coastal plan, but to fit Coastal Commission's needs. But, in the end, it's-
As I said, we're happy to assist the city council.
Yeah, and city council can opt to disregard the recommendation, that's perfectly fine, and that's the position.
Well, if you will, why don't I make the resolution, and then we can talk about a straw vote. I'll move with Resolution Number PC 18-23, a resolution to plan and commission the city of San Clemente, California, authorizing staff to publish a draft local coastal program land use plan amendment for a six-week public review and comment period beginning on September 19, 2018.
Okay, do we have a second, and let me get a heads up on your opinion of doing it as a recommendation outside the resolution, or doing it within the resolution?
I think it would be cleaner for you to adopt the resolution because the public review period is supposed to start tonight, and then you can make a separate motion, if you wish, to transmit an opinion to council.
Let's do it.
A second and a motion.
All in, we have a-
Aye.
A-
Motion by Wu.
Motion by Wu. Wu seconded it, and all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes 7-0. And let's do a straw vote on just making a recommendation that the planning commission have an opportunity to review after public comment, to assist the city council in making their final decision.
If the city council desires.
If, at their discretion.
I'll second, I'll second that motion.
So, yeah, let me, let me interject a little contrary comment. I mean, I appreciate the desire to review, I want to, you know, redo it for exactly the same reasons you do, but as I'm looking at the timeframe for this and how much value we can put into these two very narrow changes, and as Commissioner Brown was saying, a lot of discussion has gone into this already. I don't know, given that we've covered this ground, and covered it again, and covered it a few more times, I'm not sure for these two parcels, how much we're going to add to it by adding and add, while adding weeks or a month into the process.
I'm not really worried about the parcels, I think, let them go, let them go do their thing, it'll bounce back and forth with Coastal forever. Where I'm interested in the review is the date thing, so make sure all the fine print of making sure we move this thing from 1977 to make sure it's 2018, that all the definitions are right, like Mr. McGuire just mentioned, that let's make sure the roof replacement is a replacement, and that's not part of your 15.
That's my biggest concern.
That's where the devil, the details, where I want to review it. I don't care about, oh, Coronado Lane, I just let it flip through.
But there's two, there's two things you said there, right? One is the date that's being moved, and the other is the ordinance itself. We're not talking about changing the ordinance, we're talking about just changing the date for those units in the coastal zone. Am I correct on that?
Well, we're just offering our, volunteer our help, and the city council can choose.
Let me ask staff, make sure I'm not all wet here. Is it true that what we're looking at changing is only the date, that base date we're starting at, and we're not, otherwise, we're not, and that's only for the coastal zone, and we're not changing the ordinance itself in terms of the nonconforming ordinance?
That's correct. It's just a land use plan of the coastal, local coastal program. It's related to a major remodel under a coastal development permit, not our zoning ordinance.
Is that a definition, though, is that at issue here also?
No, the definition is not at issue, it's just the starting date, whether it's 1977 or another date, like 2018.
So, we wouldn't even have that ordinance in front of us, only the date?
Yeah, we're, and as you mentioned, you know, we've talked to Coastal Commission about this. The only, the only thing before us that we've discussed with Coastal Commission is changing the date, and that's the only thing we've really talked to them about. They altered this, the major remodel definition, as part of the suggested modifications that came back this year, and put very specific language in there. You can look at that, it's as part of the suggested modification. So, the only thing we're looking at is that cumulative date, that's all we're looking at.
So, you know, I'm a planning commissioner, too, so I love to talk about this stuff, in my opinion, but my concern is that we would be, and I'll shut up because I've said plenty on it, but my concern is that we're adding friction, a lot of friction to the process, without really the opportunity to add much value, because if all we're talking about is, is this the right date, I don't know if adding a month or so to that, to the process, is worth us discussing that.
I'm not sure that would be the case. So, it's already a done deal that we've accepted their recommendation on the definition of a remodel?
Yes.
Yes. The only thing that's up open for discussion, as far as we're concerned, is the date of the cumulative change.
And we didn't need this presentation, basically. Very good, okay. Okay. Let's, do we have, I think we've already passed the resolution then, so we can move on to next item. Mr. Tally has some young men to take care of. So, we will go to new business, we have none, old business, we're reports from commissioners and staff.
Can we talk about the future agenda? On 10-3, for everybody, we have four appeals coming to us on STUUs. One's appeal, permit denial, and the other three are on amortizations. And so, that's a entirely separate process that some of us remember from the outlet malls signage issue, it's, and so I'd recommend that Commissioner Crandall get with the assistant city attorney, and make sure that the format, there is, if you can find one that would evolve, the one I used as a chair with the outlet malls was kind of put together by the lawyers that we used, because BBK had to recuse, and so it was, we tried to structure it as best we could, but I just make sure, if you can find some structure with Commissioner Crandall, and then either Mal, or whoever's going to be the guy in the seat that night, everybody get together, the three of you, the four, not the other commissioners, because it gets to be a little different situation. So, just something, we, appeals, we don't often run, and it'd be helpful, that's all I'm going to say.
Thank you for the good comment and help. Commissioner Wu.
Yeah, two things. One is, I just want to notify staff, Commissioner Crandall's going to be gone from the October 10th meeting, you're aware of the DRC meeting. going to be gone from the October 10 meeting. You're aware for the DRC meeting. So we'll need a replacement for that. So.
They'll be on that tomorrow.
Very, okay, very good. And Commissioner Kozinski reminded me that there's a League of Cities Planning Conference coming up, maybe not till spring. But since he brought it up and it was on my mind, I know what we've done in the past. We've had the opportunity to have some spots in that conference that we can send people to. And really, I just wanted to bring it to staff's attention so that you can start working on any kind of, you know, budgeting or allocations that have to happen to get people from the Commission into the conference.
Well, I know League of Cities had a conference last week in Long Beach.
Oh, was that the one you were talking about?
Well, that was for City Councils and City Managers and all that. There's generally one for...
There's another one in the spring.
For Planning Commissioners.
Okay.
I can't remember.
I'll look into that for you.
They're generally budget for it.
Just a heads up. Thank you.
I've been to a few of those. Or APA, which is even better.
Okay, Commissioner Wu.
Last, Coastal Advisory Committee, Leslie already reported the activity for much of it, about shoreline protection, beach nourishment, et cetera. The only other thing I want to report is we're asked to prepare a work plan. Coastal Advisory Committee is a little different because their agenda is not set up by City Council. We initiate our own item we want to discuss. And that's all.
Okay. And I want to just say on 11-8-18, I will be missing the Planning Commission meeting. I will be out of town. So be easy on Jim. I've been waiting for eight years to make life miserable for him. Okay, so do we have a motion to adjourn?
I'll move, we adjourn to the next adjourned regular meeting. The Planning Commission will be held on October 3, 2018 at 6:00 PM in the Council Chambers located at 100 Avenue in Presidio, San Clemente, California, as the October 3, 2018 study session has been canceled.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Wu. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes 7-0.